Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's so nice to see so many members of our community. It's my pleasure to make a motion for the board to return to public session if I could have a second. Thank you. Julia, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 5-0. Welcome. Tonight, we are so looking forward to celebrating a couple of our Students of Distinction who are in attendance with their proud families. And we are very much looking forward to a presentation related to our work with a technology grant in the region. And we're joined by staff members and members of the administration. And before we turn our attention to all of the above, if everybody would kindly join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you so much. And before we turn our attention to our special guests and our featured presentation, we are going to, I'm going to recommend that we postpone board subcommittee reports until later in the meeting, but we'll just take a brief moment for some Board of Education announcements, starting with Jake. Welcome, Jake.
Hi. Sorry if my voice sounds bad. I've been singing a lot, so I've started to lose my voice.
Not at all.
Sing it instead.
Seems like just yesterday, I was giving my last speech to you all about what's going on in the district. It's hard to believe an entire month has passed by so quickly. Ironically enough, today is Groundhog Day. And even though I'm going to butcher this pronunciation, Punxsutawney Phil saw his shadow and predicted an extra six weeks of winter. The incredible lineup of things happening within our district will make those extra six weeks of cold fly by with all smiles. Campus Congress has had two meetings since I've last spoke, and at those meetings, we've discussed various projects and proposals, including initiatives to show our gratitude for the support staff and the high school on how to improve summer curriculum in coordination with the teachers, and as well as contacting of local vendors for school merchandise. We also conducted a survey of our members to gauge their thoughts and opinions on how we're performing as a congress. We received a lot of great feedback on ways that members think we can become more efficient and more productive, but the general consensus was that Campus Congress is working pretty effectively. At the high school, we just started our third quarter, and for our underclassmen, now is the time of the year when they select their courses for next year. To help students in the decision, the high school hosted Curriculum Night on Tuesday, January 24th, for parents to come in and talk with current students and teachers about paths forward for their children. One of our robotics teams, The Mob, in an alliance with Scarsdale, has qualified to advance towards states and have prospects of advancing even further to Worlds, which will be held in Houston in April. John Jay's other teams are preparing for the next qualifier event at John Jay East Fishgill on February 18th. Also recently at John Jay, acclaimed Sopranos actor Vincent Pastore visited to talk with students in the series, as well as the acting classes. Students in the series are experts on Pastore's role in The Sopranos. The classes watched nine of the 13 episodes in the show's first season together, analyzing the story's arc and its characters. There were so many questions that the Q&amp;A session ran as long as his presentation. The line of students who wanted to have a photo with him was even longer. This is such an incredible opportunity for our students, and on behalf of everyone, we sincerely thank Vincent Pastore for donating his time to visit us. On the subject of theater, the Spring Musical, Nine to Five, the musical, which I am in, with music and lyrics by Dolly Parton, based on the 1980s hit movie by the same name, has begun rehearsals, and my sore feet can prove it. Set in the late 70s, this hilarious story of friendship and revenge will open on March 23rd at the high school and run until March 25th. More information on tickets will come out soon, so stay tuned. For our winter sport athletes, teams have been hosting their senior nights, celebrating all of the time and effort our seniors have put into their respective teams. Now onto the middle school, where I would first like to congratulate our band, chorus, and orchestra students for their incredible performances throughout January. Also at JJMS was the Ancient Egyptian Museum, with projects ranging from beetle shells to arrows. The impressive event was the culmination of two months of work, and this year, the John Jay Middle School tradition has celebrated its 25th anniversary. Tomorrow, February 3, interim reports for the trimester come out. And the theater club down at the middle school is already hard at work getting ready for their spring musical, Honk, a charming adaptation of the 1842 story of the ugly duckling by Hans Christian Andersen. Honk tells the story of an odd-looking baby duck, Ugly, and his quest to find his mother. Recently at Katona Elementary School on January 28th, the KES PTO hosted the 5th Grade Pancake Breakfast, an incredible fundraiser to help support the students, activities, and other events. 5th graders were also offered a taste of local government on a 5th grade trip to the Westchester County Board of Legislators. Erica Pierce, District 2 legislator and Katona resident, welcomed the group. Student legislators were assigned to committees to discuss two potential bills, and with legislator Emmett Barrow stating, "Today's trip was interesting, interactive, and fun. I really hope we can go again." Upcoming at KES on February 27th is the Science Fair. Returning in person this year, the KES Science Fair invites all future scientists to participate and showcase their amazing discoveries. Participation is greatly encouraged, and registration is free and is open until February 13th. At Meadow Pond, the Yearbook is hosting a Yearbook cover contest for the 5th graders. This year's theme is Max the Moose Lends a Hand. To enter, 5th graders must submit their design on a piece of paper before March 3rd, and the winner's artwork will be displayed on the front cover, and the first runner-up will be displayed on the back cover. Upcoming at Increase Miller is the IMES Concert, celebrating our incredible musicians and all of their hard work. This concert will take place February 7th at the theater. Also upcoming on February 28th is the IMES PTO Stream. And throughout the district, students are embracing all that KLSD has to offer. For all of our students, from the ones who just joined our district at the beginning of the school year in kindergarten, to those preparing to leave as they receive their college decisions, and for all of our teachers and staff, now is an incredibly exciting time for our little KLSD community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. That was wonderful. Thank you for your K through 12 and beyond update, and best of luck with Nine to Five. Very exciting. And we appreciate your lifting us up out of the winter doldrums with your enthusiasm for all that's happening around the district. That was great. Any comments or questions for Jake before we move on? And I will pause briefly for any other board announcements before we move forward. I'm sure Andrew has a few announcements while board members are gathering their thoughts. I'll turn it over to you, Andrew. Thank you.
Mine are modest by comparison to Jake's, but I'm happy to make them and always happy to follow Jake. Thank you, Jake. He mentioned music, and last night, actually, Alex and I had the opportunity to attend the 4th and 5th grade concert at Meadow Pond Elementary School. I will say, after having attended the high school and middle school concerts recently, it was really nice to now go and see where it all begins, and our teachers, Linda Kirshenbaum there, and Chris Ariani, and Nicole Cronin, do a really nice job of actually showing even the evolution within the short period of time that the 4th grade students had come from the start of the year up until the advent of this concert last night. So that was really nice to see. And next week, similar concerts are at Increase Miller and Katona Elementary School. A couple of words from the world of sports. Our varsity girls basketball team has been having an incredibly successful run. Someone in the audience is going to know what happened this afternoon. They went into this afternoon's game on a nine-game winning streak and played their rival, Somers, this afternoon. So I don't know the outcome, and I'll just keep fingers crossed that the streak has stayed alive, but whatever happened, they're having a tremendous season, and we want to congratulate them on that. This past Sunday, wrestling coaches and staff hosted the Matt Zeller Memorial JV Wrestling Tournament, which hosted 20 teams from around the region and almost 300 wrestlers. So I want to give a very, very large shout-out, thank you to our athletic director, Christian McCarthy, our coaches, our O&amp;M staff, our sports boosters, some of whom I see here tonight, and many community member volunteers who made that event wonderful. I know Julia was part of that, so thank you also. And it's terrific that that event could go on. And then I want to congratulate Megan Condon, who's actually also called out on our sports website. Megan was recently honored as the winner of the NIAAA Scholar-Athlete Essay Contest. The NIAAA is the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, and Megan wrote a very thoughtful essay about the values of perseverance and hard work that she learned through being a four-year varsity athlete and a team captain while taking a very demanding academic course load on top of that. So congratulations to Megan. And then my final announcement, this coming Monday, I have my next superintendent's coffee of this school year. All are invited. This coffee will be at Katona Elementary School at 9:30 on Monday morning. Hope to see some of you there if you've made it through the very cold weekend that's coming up. Come warm up with some coffee on Monday morning. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Were there any additional announcements? I will just briefly mention two other announcements. This weekend, I believe, is the opening of the Katona Art Museums youth exhibit, so hopefully, if not this weekend, over the course of the next couple of weeks, people will have an opportunity to go and check out the artwork of students in the region, including five of our very own John Jay High School students. And then also, believe it or not, it is that time of year again where tomorrow, I believe, Kim will be sending a notice to our entire community to let individuals who may be interested know that packets for board candidacy will be available in the district. And with that, I think we are ready to turn our attention to our opportunity to honor two of our students, RJ Garofalo and Mia O'Keefe, both of whom are here with us with their proud parents and family members. Yay! Indeed, yay! Thank you. And it is my pleasure to invite Andrew to welcome the Assistant Superintendent for Bosse's Louis Riolo, who is with us and who will preside over our ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Couldn't have asked for a better introduction than we just heard. So with that, I will introduce Lou Riolo, Assistant Superintendent, my colleague from Bosse's. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, I'm Lou Riolo. I'm one of the Assistant Superintendents at PNW Bosse's, and this is probably one of the highlights of, you know, the year. We do this once a month throughout our district, so we're really looking forward to it. I just want to, on behalf of Dr. Ryan and the PNW Bosse's Board, I want to thank Dr. Selesnik for his relationship and his hard work with Bosse's, and along with the board and the entire community at Katona Lewisboro. It's an actually wonderful relationship, and we always want to continue that. We're here this evening to recognize Mia O'Keefe and Robert Garofalo. And I will ask Dr. Selesnik to come on up, and please join us as we give out to students the medals for the Student of Distinction Award from PNW Bosse's. I would like to take a moment to recognize our PNW Bosse's administration, faculty, and staff here tonight to celebrate this wonderful achievement. First off, our amazing Dr. Nicole Genexi, who is our Director of Special Education, our wonderful Ms. Catherine White, Principal of our Walden School. And our dedicated, fantastic educators here tonight, Mr. Richard Norris, Ms. Brooke Chapman, Ms. Lizette Brock, and Ms. Howley. I know our two award recipients are really excited, so I will hand over the festivities to Ms. Catherine White, our principal at Walden School.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Even with heels, I'm a little shorter than Lou. Good evening, and thank you so much to the Katona Lewisboro Board of Education and administrators for the opportunity to celebrate two amazing Walden students whom we are so very proud of, Robert Garofalo, who we know as RJ, and Mia O'Keefe, who we know as Louie. Mia's been feeding me candy, so I'm trying to mask it. I will be speaking about RJ first. RJ has made amazing progress since beginning class in September and is a child who infectiously lights up a classroom. RJ's teacher, Ms. Chapman, is so proud of his progress and often brags that he enthusiastically volunteers to participate in class activities, especially when the smartboard is involved. I was over the moon just the other day when I was making the usual visits to classroom, and RJ was once again up at the smartboard. With no inhibition at all, RJ stepped over, passed me the marker, and let me know that it was indeed Mrs. White's turn. RJ is extremely social, as you can see. With that smile and that beautiful glow, I guess you'd have to be. RJ interacts with all adults in the classroom, as well as his peers, and everyone enjoys his company. Speech pathologist Ms. Brock raves that RJ is such a pleasure to work with and that he is one of her best volunteers, always raising his hand to answer a question, all while greatly strengthening his communication skills along the way. RJ, we are all so very proud of you and all the progress you have made. Keep expressing yourself, shining bright, and working hard. We love you so much. We're so proud of you, and we couldn't be happier to honor you as our Student of Distinction. Come on up, RJ. This is certainly not the first time that Mia O'Keefe is being recognized as our Student of Distinction at PNW Bosse's. Last year, she received this honor as well. When Mia's teacher, Mr. Norris, called Mia's mom to inform her of our choice, he shared with me that she immediately questioned it, asking, "Are you sure?" Because she received this last year already. My response back was immediately, "There is nothing I could be more certain of. Mia, you amaze me, and you are so definitely worth being honored two years in a row." Mia's growth this year in academics, as well as her growth socially, makes her the perfect candidate to receive this award. Mr. Norris shared that Mia always brings a positive attitude to school, and I'd like to add a super cute animal, Stuffy, as well. She is actively engaged in all learning. Mia is a fantastic math student and a very talented artist. Mia loves physical education and is always actively involved in class. She is such a well-rounded student and has definitely earned the award of Student of Distinction. On a personal note to my Louie, you were the very first student I met in August on my very first day at Walden, and you probably didn't know it, but I was really nervous meeting all my new students. You immediately ran down the hallway and ran up to me and very quickly asked if I was the new principal, if I was nice, if I liked candy, if I had ever been a principal before, and then, before I could even introduce myself and answer all your questions, you introduced me to your Roadrunner, Stuffy. After a short chat answering all of your questions, you said to me, "I think I'm going to like you, and I think you're going to like Walden, and I think you're going to like me, too." And you know what, Louie? It was in that moment that I knew I found my school with so many children to love, just like you and just like RJ. You are both amazing. Mia, we are so very proud of you and the progress you have made. Keep being yourself, unapologetically, learning, smiling, laughing, being silly, and working hard. We love you. We are so proud of you, and we couldn't be happier to honor you as our Student of Distinction. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Marjorie. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. White, for those beautiful words. Thank you, Mr. Riolo, and all of the staff, the teachers from Bosse's. Please, did you want to say a few words? Yes. Would you please come to the microphone and introduce yourself so we can get it in the public record? Thank you.
I'm Helene Hansen. I'm Angela Garofalo's mom, RJ's Gaga, otherwise known as Grandma. I also am, was a former principal of the Pinesbridge School. I was Assistant Superintendent in Southern Westchester Bosse's and in Rockland Bosse's, and my heart is full. This is what the Bosse's and local school districts, the culture that is here, is so exciting to see. And just, I think, as a district, you should be so proud that you've afforded youngsters like RJ, who obviously has significant needs, that as good as your district is, you can't meet here, but you can reach out to that intermediate unit that the Bosse's is and provide the services, that this young man, RJ, you think he deserves this. I think that he deserves, and I just, from the bottom of my heart, compliment you and thank you. And want to say to you, if ever, at 7:30 in the morning, any of you need a little jolt to be happy, come to Comanche Court in Haylen, and watch the bus driver, Mike, and monitor Linda. Meet this young boy. He jumps up the stairs, and it is the most beautiful way for a family to see their child off the school. So I thank you, but most of all, I compliment you, and couldn't be happier that RJ has the kind of program that I know in my heart is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, and really, allow me to underscore, we couldn't be happier about this partnership with Bosse's. We're so grateful to all of you who came tonight to speak on behalf of our two students. We want to congratulate Louie and RJ and their families. And thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight so we could celebrate you in person, which feels terrific, and we feel very lucky to be able to do so. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Sweet. That was amazing.
Thank you so much. What a pleasure. That was wonderful. And let's keep the celebratory momentum going. We're delighted to be joined by our Director of Technology and four of our beloved colleagues whom we haven't seen in a long time. Please join us as you can at the table, and we're really looking forward to hearing about the technology grant. Thank you.
Thank you. And while my esteemed colleagues are coming to the table, you know, it's just so timely that this is another partnership with Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's that's been so helpful to us, and they're just such wonderful partners.
Wonderful.
And not part of the presentation this evening, but in the audience is Samantha Hirsch. She's the Assistant Director of the Curriculum Center, and she's the lead facilitators of this grant, so thank you for being here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mary.
So for tonight's presentation, joined by several colleagues, Melissa Brady, who teaches Family and Consumer Science at our middle school. Unfortunately, Diane Cunningham was supposed to be here this evening. She had an unforeseen circumstance, and she wasn't able to join us. She's actually in the district today, but she was not able to stay. But I will substitute for Diane Cunningham. Marcia Dele Savo, 6th grade Social Studies and ELA teacher, also curriculum leader for middle school. Suzanne Guzziak, middle school and high school science teacher, science curriculum leader. Of course, Chris Nelson, our Director of Technology, and he is the team leader for this group. And Jesse Weiss, 6th grade teacher and math curriculum leader for the middle school. So just to give a little context for this grant, Putnam Northern Westchester has been working on some of these grants for a while. It started out OC21, which was online courses for the 21st century, and for the region, different courses were developed through Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, and then cooperating districts could send students to some of these courses. So that was a really helpful thing, and from that grew this grant. So it's a grant through New York State, and they saw that there was a need for more authentic assessment in the region, and they wanted to really focus on authentic tasks and authentic assessments. So they offered their services to the component districts, and 12 districts are participating. We're one of them. Each team is made up of teachers and administrators, and they work on these projects. And so Chris is the lead administrator on this team, and we have our four teachers. One of the requirements was that the teachers work together in some capacity, and so that they could collaborate and cooperate and have some connection in their work. So just to kind of come back to why we thought this was a good match for us, I know our board has seen this many, many times, but we think it's a big reason why participation in this grant made so much sense. So our learning engagement, you know, striving to create those learning experiences that are engaging and relevant and active, and really thinking about what those things mean, and then also thinking about our technology commitment, which we don't show as often, but is also really important, and thinking about the intentional and thoughtful use of technology. And, you know, if you look at some of the verbiage there, creating learning experiences that otherwise couldn't be created, that nurture imagination, innovative, critical, and ethical thinking, you know, we know it can increase productivity and efficiency, but it should also nurture curiosity and creativity, and thinking about that balanced use. So although this is called the Learning and Technology Grant, first and foremost, it's about learning and then thinking about how technology might enhance the learning environment. But I will turn it over to Chris.
Thank you. You want to finish that, or do you want me to take it? There we go. Thank you, Mary. Yes, Mary mentioned this is a state initiative. The state, every three years, designates some funding across the state with the purpose of doing some field research. They often send us some money to buy things, but this is always an exciting opportunity to participate because it's action research. We get a chance to learn a little bit about how we're using the technology and, you know, working with, you know, students and teachers to really understand the impact of the use of technology, more so than just being able to build the infrastructure and those types of things. And I think the timing is good, because I think this time last year, when I was presenting the technology plan, we were trying to be more intentional in terms of unpacking, you know, all the different ways that we learned how to use technology through remote learning and hybrid learning, and now that we re-entered back into the classrooms, we want to be very intentional about doing that research. So working with 14 other districts, I think, is the total, 12, 13, 14, somewhere in that range, so it's been exciting to kind of see what their needs are, it's been exciting to kind of learn where we're at in our current state, and then anchoring around authentic experiences for kids. And I think that's a great subject to work with, because the technology, if anything, allows us to connect to the world, and that has tremendous potential. It has some things that we need to kind of digest at times in terms of, you know, how often do we expose them to those opportunities, and in the same regards, putting safeguards in place to make sure they're going to the right places at the right time. So we're all aware of that, but, you know, looking at this, you'll see here, when we say districts, it's a consortium of districts that are looking at student-focused tasks, and we bolded these intentionally so that when we have an opportunity to kind of unpack some of the projects that we have planned for the spring, is that we can kind of see what has come out within there. So, and the goal here is, again, a connection to technology, but not any specific technology in such a way that we can effectively learn, create opportunities for kids to expand their learning, make connections to the world, and with that, you know, maintain some high expectations in terms of outcomes. So. Oops, sorry. So specifically, we wanted to, you know, deepen the understanding of our universal design, technology integration, looking at culturally responsive practices. We went through a series of activities that allowed the teachers that are participating in this grant to design and implement projects, and that's what we'll hear from our team here in just a moment, in terms of what specific projects we came to. And then our role, my specific role as the leader, but collectively throughout the region, is to get some feedback. And that's, I think, an opportunity to kind of reflect, as we always do, in terms of the investments that we're making with technology and how we can continue to match up, you know, expanding these opportunities and making sure that we can, you know, use the technology to meet those goals. And I think that's what the technology learning commitment was intended to do, and we continue to focus on that. For those who aren't familiar with authentic, you know, learning opportunities for students, basically, it's understanding that we have core content and curriculum that we want to expose children to, but then going beyond that in such a way that students can use it. And I think that's an important distinction, because technology is a great conduit to bring information to us. You know, Google's a great example, that you can type in anything and get content. But if you don't understand the context of that information, you don't know how to apply that to other learnings, or being able to process it in such a way that you can make an intentional, you know, opportunity to leverage more of that. These four bullets that are underneath that, I think, are areas that we wanted to make sure that we included in our projects here in terms of, you know, improving our capacity to think deeper, of being able to communicate in different modes and different opportunities for kids to express their learning, being able to, you know, work with self-awareness, you know? What does it mean for the individual learner? What does it mean for the collective community in terms of what we're learning and why? These are all things that are, I think, important for us. And then that last bullet, and I think we're always challenged with this in terms of, how do we continue to debate and learn and share in a healthy environment in such a way that we can learn from each other and develop those social skills that we give every student an opportunity to express themselves? So it's in theme, great. We had a lot of resources that were provided in the grant. We had time to work on these projects. There was time to do some reading. There was opportunity to add to our professional collections throughout the district, so we have books that we've added into all our libraries that other teachers can benefit from. So it's a rich project, and we're hoping that after this cohort, we have the opportunity, because of the three-year grant, to invite some other teachers to eventually replicate some of the good work that you'll hear tonight. So with that, I'd like to pass it along Being able to, you know, work with self-awareness, you know, what does it mean for the individual learner? What does it mean for the collective community in terms of what we're learning and why? These are all things that are important for us. And then that last bullet, and I think we're always challenged with this in terms of, how do we continue to debate and learn and share in a healthy environment in such a way that we can learn from each other and develop those social skills that we give every student an opportunity to express themselves. So it's in theme, great. We had a lot of resources that were provided in the grant. We had time to work on these projects. There was time to do some reading. There was opportunity to add to our professional collections throughout the district. So we have books that we've added into all our libraries that other teachers can benefit from. So it's a rich project and we're hoping that after this cohort, we have the opportunity because of the three-year grant to invite some other teachers to eventually replicate some of the good work that you'll hear tonight. So with that, I'd like to pass it along here. Timeline, sorry. In terms of doing that. So yeah, so as I mentioned, it's a three-year grant. It started in the 2122 school year. A lot of that was establishing at the Bosse's level, you know, connecting the format and soliciting schools and teachers from those schools to participate in that. We started our work as a district probably this time last year. I think it was early spring, late winter. It gave us opportunity to meet for the first time and develop our understanding of what our role is throughout the grant. We met several days during the summer. Again, as much as we started the process in the spring, our ability to kind of collaborate was kind of, you know, we have work to do during the spring, right? So we were able to kind of take a retreat over the summer and spend a couple of days together, which was exciting to kind of bond and work. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we're at a point now that what you're going to hear tonight, we'll put into action over the next few months, the rest of the school year. So these projects, although you'll hear from it, we won't be able to explain a lot of the results of those projects, but that will come with summary probably later this summer when we meet again to kind of unpack what students will do that. So a lot of good work, a lot of preparation, a lot of learning. And I'm happy to kind of turn it over to Melissa here to kind of start the ball rolling here in terms of the work that she's envisioning and working with students this spring.
Thank you, Chris. So you mentioned so many of the elements that brought me to be interested in the project. And I wanted to say, to start with saying how grateful I am to have the opportunity to work with colleagues. And also throughout my tenure here in Katoona, I feel like when I've wanted to learn, there have been lots of opportunities to continue to grow and learn professionally. So I'm very grateful for that. I am a family and consumer science teacher. I'm also a sustainability curriculum integration leader. And so my personal passions and my content area lend themselves really nicely to authentic work around the topic of food. So the mission in our classroom is to explore the connections between food, wellness, community, identity and sustainability. As Chris was talking about earlier, like there are just so many things that we can look up when we want to know them, but there are also so many skills that we need to practice in order to get good at them. And so the things that feel really important to me as an educator are giving children the opportunity to learn how to communicate effectively, how to be able to disseminate whether the information or determine whether the information that they're collecting and through their research and investigation is credible and reliable, how to make their own decisions and form opinions based on what they uncover. And so our second mission statement bullet would be to build our skills as questioners, critical thinkers, collaborators and communicators. And then our last target is to educate, advocate and act and share what we learn beyond our classroom walls. And so this opportunity to continue to work on authentic learning and projects that have an authentic audience was really appealing to me. The standards and dispositions that you see on the slide, you know, one of the things we love about working with Diane is that she really gets us to get to the heart of like why we are doing what we're doing and what are our whys. And so the dispositions that I chose for my work were to encourage curiosity, critical thinking and collaboration in the students and to build the social emotional competencies you see on the slide there. And then, oh, can we just go back for one quick second to the essential questions? Yeah. So these are the questions that the students use to guide their research. They have a choice, it's embedded in this project, to choose between the four themes that you see there. And there's a question, a driving question for each one of those themes, with the whole entire purpose being to be a more food literate citizen and consumer. Thank you. And the process that we follow is pretty lengthy, but it's, there's exciting elements to every step of it. So the students begin by exploring these food themes and we have some context so that they can make their choices. We do some, you know, more direct learning through guest speakers and media. And then they choose a theme, they choose their guiding question. We look at a lot of examples of what it means to educate others, to advocate for something you believe in or to take action with a purpose and they choose a purpose. They work in teams based on their interests. Then they choose an audience that they're going to design for, learn for and design for. Their products will be some form of media, will have some form of media connected, which is the technology piece. And so the students, we start by looking at examples of media in six different categories, which you'll see in a couple of minutes. And the students generate criteria for effective media products based on the exemplars that they see. Once they choose their media and their skills and their purpose and their audience, they create a goal statement. And an example of a goal statement might be, "We will educate students in the elementary schools about making healthy food choices through a children's book." And then they have to collect a lot of information. We spend a lot of time learning about credible and reliable sources of information. They do the investigative work. They have some peer review and self-assessment built in. That was a real target of my work this year. And then they start creating their media and then eventually they deliver it to their audience and reflect upon the process. These are some examples of some of the work, some of the products that I've created for the students to do those tasks. So on the right side is the choice board, which highlights the six different forms of media that they can create. And I'd like to just note that in the top right corner, there's also an action project. And so the idea would be that some students, based on their skills and interests and personal, you know, style, might rather be behind the camera, some want to create audio, some want to create video and some want to be busy doing something, making something. And so there's a community action project opportunity for those who choose that. And then this is just work in progress. On the bottom right, this is something I created this year to have the students like self-assess when they're finding a resource and taking notes. And in the top right, top left actually is like an assessment tool that I'm working with, with their criteria on the left and their rating scale there. And then I'm going to ask them to provide evidence of their work for authenticity on their part. And again, grateful for the opportunity. It's wonderful to work with my colleagues, one of whom I've been a fan of since I started. And this is Marcia Dele Savo.
Thank you so much for inviting me. I am so excited to share this project with you. And honestly, I could talk for hours, but I promise you I will not. I will keep it relatively brief. I do teach sixth grade ELA and my project is the Biography Book Club Project. The plan is to have the children work in book clubs where they will self-select a biography of their choosing. They will read this biography together as a group. And then, once they have read the biography and all of the discussion that goes with our book clubs, they will then, as a group, do extra research, looking at primary and secondary sources. They will discuss those sources, which ones are reliable, which ones are credible, which ones are maybe we shouldn't be using these kind of things, which is very important for them to be able to choose and make decisions about what is good information to use. When they have finished that, they will then work as individuals to create a project. And so Mary, you can move on. And these are the four projects that they are going to be working on. They can choose a public service announcement about the person that they have researched. So it's more of a the more you know. And one of the other things that I do at the middle school is Jessie and I run the Wake Up John Jay television studio. So the more you know piece is going to be part of our Wake Up John Jay. So when you see the announcements in the morning, you might be learning about Harry Houdini or you might be learning about Barack Obama or whoever the children have chosen to learn about. One of the things that I want them to do is, as they're reading, I want them to look for, how did the subject of their biography overcome adversity? What life lessons maybe can they take away from the person that they have been researching? So a diary entry, if they were to step into the shoes of the person that they researched, perhaps they could write a diary entry or several diary entries about the person. Many of my students enjoy graphic novels. A graphic novel would be too big of a project, but they could do comic strips using Powtoon or make-believe comics. So these are all technology projects. So rather than showing me what you know just by regurgitating, now you're going to be, it's all about content creation. And then the last one is really stepping into the shoes of the person, becoming that person. And now you're going to have maybe a friend interview you. Or I've had students who, they're the interviewer and they're the subject. So we've had some really creative things. So that's it in a nutshell. But the benefits, if you were to walk into the classroom and you wanted to, so what are the kids gaining? Well, besides all of the standards that of course we're including, letting them choose their own biography fosters a sense of choice and voice so they can, you know, have their own opinions about what they've read. It certainly enhances critical thinking skills. If you're looking at a variety of articles and one of them is very positive towards a person and another is very negative, well, now you have to make some decisions. What do you think about that? It certainly nurtures creativity. If you're making a movie and you have many different choices about, are you going to have a voiceover? Are you going to choose music if you're choosing music? Is it royalty-free music? Are you recognizing the people that are making the music that maybe you are adding to your iMovie? So there's lots of ethical pieces that you want to include as well. And hopefully it establishes the lifelong habit of being a reader because if you can read, you can do anything. And to me, that's the most important skill that you can teach a child. And these are my standards and dispositions, which I think you'll probably find boring, but they're there. And so now I'm going to pass it on to Suzanne, who's going to talk about her science project.
Thank you, Marcia. Suzanne Guzziak. And I was terrified at the first session when they told us, we're going to do this work and it's going to be shared not just with us, but with New York State. That was very intimidating for me and I'm just going to put that out loud. And so there were some criteria and there was a big process that we went through in our summer work and thinking. And there were some constraints and it actually, this, I'll be honest, this was my second choice project and that was in large part due to the constraints of the grant itself. There were deadlines, there's reporting, there's, you know, responsibilities. Because, you know, at the end of the day, to do this and as part of an environmental studies and an ecology unit would be amazing, but that doesn't happen by May 1st. So I had to take a really deep dive into the content standards to say what actually does work, to be aligned with what is considered by definition authentic learning and could provide choice and was relevant and would be fun and was interdisciplinary so that there was interconnectedness. And when you really sit down and think about it and then you get into the daily dues of what you need to do, that narrowed the field and became more challenging than I thought at first. And so my project is going to focus on genetic engineering and its personal impact on citizens, which meets the 6-8-ness list standard. And then through this process, the hope is that it encourages kids to develop collaborative dispositions, which are essential in the practice of science. Scientists don't work in isolation. And then to build social emotional competencies, like social awareness and interpersonal skills. And those all feed back in, of course, to the district's learning commitment. So that's the goal that we hope to get to by April. And so the overview of the project is that students are going to gather and evaluate information related to a genetic technology of choice. Then, and that technology needs to be something that's part of their everyday lives. And so the areas of choice that made the most sense are food, medicine, animal husbandry and fertility. And it raised some questions for me a little bit about, you know, what age is appropriate, but it is secondary. These are things that are part of their lives. And, you know, I think in middle school, you've got kids along, across a wide spectrum. And so these areas offered some choices that could fit any kind of learner. So they're going to create a piece that they are going to decide what it looks like for an audience of their choice, thinking about some of the pros and cons of these, connected to these four different areas. And I've changed my mind several times about who their authentic audience is and I'm still not 100% sure. And I blame Mike Samartano, a member of the professional learning team, who I was set and then I had a conversation and then changed my mind. And I think, you know, that's the biggest takeaway through the conversations with Jessie and Marcia and Melissa, plus with other schools in the region, you had an idea and then you said, gee, this could make it better or this could change or this won't work in our district for this reason, but this might kind of work. And then through conversations with the ELA teacher, the integration and the importance of those research skills and getting those to be reinforced in an area outside of ELA, I think this project will do a great job. I've called together a list of, a list, an actual collection of articles and videos so that students can, who can access the information through different modalities. That was one of the criteria of the project. That students learn in different ways, they get information in different ways. And we as teachers have a responsibility to provide those opportunities for kids. And we had to think about some ways that were really atypical from what we would normally consider in the process. And so I think the biggest part of the process was reflection as we moved through it. There wasn't a midday morning, an afternoon, end of day, after two days, independently on your own time when you weren't thinking. And we thought about a lot of things, including the purpose of classwork. What are students doing in the classroom with their time? And how important feedback is for students? And that the grade is kind of the end, but the learning went all along the way. And so what conversations are you having with students and how are you organizing the work? And how are you organizing that feedback? So through the course of my project, students will have independent peer checklist work. They'll be in peer conversations. They'll have to look for certain criteria and have those conversations with each other as well as with me. And that was a criteria for all of us to have as part of our work to encourage, you know, kids' creativity, but also to keep them in line with the content as it integrates across the way. We spent a lot of time in the process observing mini lessons and models and had some really great conversations of what makes for good, authentic practice and what's fake authentic practice and everything in between. And so that was grinding on our minds a lot of the time. And you laughed at the end of the day a little bit, Wilton, you know, in the process. But, you know, each session started the day with some mini lesson of the day and then some work time and then reflection. And so those elements I found as I've designed my unit have woven their way into the work. We also spent a lot of time community building and I know that that's a big component and an initiative here at the high school. And it's trickling down into the middle school to connect students with each other. And so, you know, I was the cornhole champion. I'm proud to represent that as our district. But, you know, little things that you did that were not necessarily connected to the work, but connected to building connections with each other so that you can feel comfortable building dispositions like collaboration. And so that was, we did what the students would be doing in our authentic project and our authentic learning is this work that we're going to be doing for the kids. And it was vulnerable in a lot of ways. You know, as a teacher, sharing your work with other districts, other middle schools, some elementary schools with each other in a way that when you're designing. in a way that when you're designing on your own, you don't see necessarily. And with that, I turn it over to Jesse.
Oh, thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm last, so I don't want to like overkill some of the same things about the process. But before I get into my project, I do want to reiterate what everyone's been saying. Suzanne and I don't actually get opportunity to talk that much, you know? And we teach, I do teach science as well. We're the same content area, different grades. And it was actually very, very empowering to sit down and do that kind of professional work, be able to allocate time to it and carefully reflect, work with Samantha. Like it's just not something in the day-to-day grind that we really get a chance to do. And it was very, very different from sort of your own planning, which was extremely helpful. And I think a lot of us are starting to do that work now just on our own with colleagues in our departments, just starting to realize this is the way we can look at doing work professionally. In terms of the project itself, I approached this with the idea of authenticity being the key component. Anyone who knows me at this point, I've been on a bit of a soapbox about math for a few years. And it is one of the more challenging aspects for sixth grade math, but even middle school math is to find actual authenticity. I think for the most part of history, authenticity was word problems, right? Maybe a project, but it wasn't connected to anything particularly outside the classroom. We were mimicking the world around us. We would do, you know, a project to design a pool, but no one was building a pool. So what came to mind was the idea, we have a sustainability goal, you know? And I looked at that and said, why not have the kids actually go out, research, gather data locally in different regions? And then actually look at the differences in usage in different parts of, whether it's New York State or the country, different types of area, rural, urban? And then use the knowledge that they're going to learn about ratios and percentages to actually see, does something exist out there? I think there's a general tendency to underestimate what the kids can do at this point. The technology allows us to leverage a lot. You know, when we were in school, it was, I believe I was telling kids that we didn't have calculators and their heads exploded. I do have some from like 1970 that my dad saved. So I really wanted to use the technology to allow them to get real information, do something real, look at the real world, not just do workbook problems. So they will be actually sort of playing around, looking at information about different areas of usage. It could be land usage, water usage, food usage, energy usage in different regions. And based on that choice, they'll be grouped and they're going to actually have to design their own way to gather data. Sorry, I'm a little dry. Some of it is going to be just research online. But then they're going to have to figure out who they want to reach out to locally and how. So we have been playing around with Excel and forms and gathering data that way. Oh, look at Chris. So nice. I've been sick for days.
It's a good team.
Oh, I've been sick for like two weeks at this point. That's right. Yeah, where's the pizza? That would probably work. So yeah, they're, they're going to be designing how they collect the data. And then they're going to be using the math skills they use to actually analyze it and look at what's the ratio of usage, how does it compare? And there's not going to be any kind of conclusion from my side. It's going to be just what they find. I don't have any idea in mind of what it's going to show them. Hopefully it shows something, but it may not. It may show that even if shows that there is no difference, that's still something they're learning. Once they have that information and they've come up with some kind of pattern they're seeing or something they want to share, they have a choice of what they make to share that. And I'm with Suzanne, I'm like playing around. Samantha's been trying to help me, like what audience do I do? So they're going to have a choice of making a podcast, like a PSA movie. I'm still trying to figure out, I do want to leave them analog. If they want to do something like written or, you know, I had kids sometimes in science, they want to build something by hand. So trying to give them a lot of choice in what they share and how they share it. And the hope is that with that authentic off the audience, we move beyond just math in a workbook, math on a page, teach test, hope for the best. Not that I do that, but that's still the kid's mentality. So I'm hoping it turns out great. I'm not starting for a little while, but what I have been doing is kind of leaning in the direction now. So my kids in science are actually starting to plan to make podcasts. Cause we do have like a new podcast mixer at the middle school. And so they're going to be teaching science through storytelling. And I'm hoping that way, that seems like an option to them when they get to the point. Because otherwise they'll all make iMovies probably because they do that a lot. They do it with me. They do it in science, will like film stuff and they present. I did actually just recently, I don't know if anyone knows this, but Avery Trufelman used to go here, if you don't know, through eighth grade. And she's like a podcast person, like, like legit, like, no, like they like interviewer for like the New Yorker, like she's, she's like 31, I think. So I reached out and I'm going to be meeting with her tomorrow on the phone and she's going to give me some advice. I don't know if she'll be able to come here or not. She is in the city, but she was really excited about the idea of kind of just providing resources because I don't know how to make podcasts at all. You know, if we were making music, if we were making movies, that's in my wheelhouse, but it's not something I know. And the kids don't really know, even though they listen to them sometimes. It, it's a very unique thing because they're scripting, they're sound design. So I'm, the idea behind it was to make an authentic idea. They're using the math in a way that they're really looking at the world and maybe trying to do something to change things. It provides an opportunity for creativity, which we do not get a lot of in math, truthfully. You know, we try, but typically the grind of sort of, there is the content, there is the skills, there is the curriculum takes precedent. It always kind of has that weight. So the hope would be that it's a much more authentic use for them. And then we're actually, I'm going to be able to more authentically know, do they understand what they're doing, right? It's not, can I calculate a percentage? But it's more along the lines of what does that do for me? Like, why do I care? And mostly they only know like those things around sports. So that's my hope, that they'll really be able to use the math to look critically at the world and not see it as just another thing to do and an opportunity. I have no idea what the board is looking at in terms of curriculum, but you know, there's a big push around data science in math a lot. And we play around with stuff in the middle school with that. But for me, this was also a good example of that, like the idea that we're going to use data and analyze it to actually like do something rather than just, you know, once again, the word problems, I hate to say it, but the word application gets thrown out around a lot. But we don't necessarily trust 12-year-olds to apply anything. So I'm hoping that they can, they themselves can learn that they're capable of these things. Like it's not beyond them to look at numbers and make conjecture and analyze things and then present something to someone. That's my pitch.
Thank you. So I hope you've enjoyed listening to our wonderful colleagues and all the work they're doing in classrooms. And we just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you. This was terrific. We really appreciate this visibility into what you've been doing. This is Katona Lewisboro's first time participating in this grant. I assume, has this grant existed for a long time? Is it relatively?
Not in this form.
Okay.
Yeah, the learning technology grants at the state level have been around for, for many years, but our participation for this particular topic and stuff, I think is, is timely. Yeah.
Really exciting and seeing your enthusiasm, not only for your individual projects, but for the opportunity to collaborate with one another and also to share your work with other school districts and to learn from one another. It, it sounds terrific. And we can't know what the teams from the other districts look like, but this just feels like an exemplary outcome and we're not even to the finish line yet. But this is, you know, really terrific work and has very exciting potential for our students in so many subject areas. And we really appreciate you connecting the opportunity to reflect on technology and to incorporate it in your practice to other initiatives around the district. You know, thinking broadly about making learning experiences that are relevant and engaging and active and sounds really exciting. And we look forward to hearing how it unfolds as you implement more of the work with your students. But, you know, we, we really thank you and it was very helpful. As you continued to speak with us, I think initially we were getting an understanding of the individual projects, but then also coming to understand the actual process and the experience of the professional learning that you had. And I think you've really helped us see the benefits of that and make it, you know, sort of palpable. So thank you for helping us to understand what you experienced professionally and, and how valuable that feels. Really helpful. So we really thank you. I'm, I'm sure there are other questions and comments. Please, Ilana.
Thank you so much for that. I, I'm really a believer, obviously, in the authentic experiences. And it's really wonderful to see that integrated and also to hear about how, as Marjorie said, is, as you're just doing this, it's changing your own practice and work together and sort of thinking a little bit, just how to collaborate as opposed to being alone in your classroom, which I'm sure happens sometimes because you're independent, kind of running your own thing. I was curious about a couple of things. I guess sort of when you, when you chose the topics, how you kind of came, came to those things and, and how? And then it's sort of related, and I don't want to be leading, but like, will there be sort of a student feedback portion of kind of modifying these projects as you go along? Or how might that be integrated or thought about even as the projects start to get kind of rolled out?
I can start. Yeah, you like that. Whatever you want. Feel free.
So in choosing a topic, there were rules, if you will, there were parameters. And so it had to connect into your content. First and foremost, it had to be something that could also provide an authentic audience and still address the standards. So you had to bring your standards, read them and then work within, when we had to present where you would be in your curriculum? And was there something that fit in, in there? Then we had a series of lessons on what makes an authentic audience and what feedback looks like, how to give feedback, so on and so forth. So that as you thought about this standard that you chose, you started to think, what are the things that the kids are going to need along the way? We weren't explicitly told we had to have feedback from the kids, but now that you mention it.
It's an interesting question. There, you know, we all, so far, I think in our discussions, it seems like we've all built in reflection for the students, but reflection with the intent of getting their feedback on the learning process. I think would probably be something that we would individually have either planned for or not planned for. I think there are a lot of things you pick up along the way as you're working with students. And it's our job to be receptive to that information and then pivot or read or adjust or redesign. But it will be interesting to see what their thoughts are, I think, for trying to do their subject, like in some subjects, it may not be as much of a, of a, of a change or it might not be as novel to do a different kind of a project, like a project-based learning. But I think in math, it would be interesting to get their feedback, right?
Yeah, I mean, I've moved towards doing as many reasonably, as many PBL thing activities as I can. I ended last year doing a, because we do percent, I'm sorry, averages, right? Statistics, I did a grading project. I adapted something from PBL works where they actually looked at, because it turns out they had no idea what grading was. They like literally did not know where their grade came from. They didn't under, I'm not making that up. They didn't understand that things were like average together. They didn't know that there was things as weighted averages. They had no clue. So I did actually elicit their feedback at the end of it in terms of both the process and like the product choices. And they were able to give me some really good ideas, like for when I go to do it this year, you know, maybe this, do it this way, give this opportunity, how much time we take for different things. So I usually generally try to do, I elicit a lot of feedback through the kids just through like forums and discussions and things. So that's been really helpful. And the other piece it does is it gives them a lot of efficacy in it. Because they don't feel like they just did it. They now have ability to inform what's going to happen next year based on their experience, right? They weren't just someone who was sort of a guinea pig to do it. They are part of the process of the growing of that project for future, you know, future students. So it was really helpful. So that, that's my plan. Cause I do that fairly often anyway.
And full disclosure for the guinea pigs sitting here. We started, now that I really think back, we started really thinking out of the box because we were all at the middle school for some segment of the day. And we had some deep conversations about what are some building goals and community goals and things that connect in what things could we vertically articulate? Six, eight, because we have, you know, like we're up the line. And we sat for
We used at least a day.
A lot. And really thought, is there something that we can do that's a fully integrated project, connected into sustainability, which connects into all of our content areas, so on and so forth? And then we really thought about the systems in which we work. And the systems in which we work place some finite limits, whether it's down to scheduling or when rotations happen. Even, you know, because Melissa and I are both in the same grade level, but there were some hard limits there connected back to the timing. And whereas other members of the consortium or grant group, they were kind of working in-house in building on a grade level. There are some of the teams that were there, they were, the whole fifth grade is going to do this or this cohort. We found we had to kind of go independent projects just because of logistics.
Suzanne was trying to say we bit off a little more than we could chew. All of us, I think. And like, for example, if Marcia and I were on the same team, it would have been easy to do it. But I can't, you know, we don't teach the same schedule, even though we're in the same grade level and we have the different subjects. So that was a little bit challenging, but the process was still really, really interesting. You know, I, I was in the group with Diane today, with Diane Cunningham, math today. And it is interesting to watch just that, how you change, how you approach the stuff you're doing by doing work, particularly that, you know, most of the district at this level has been here a long time, you know? People have been teaching 20, 25. So it's interesting to have someone sort of prevent, present to you another way to look at work. And it can be really, really effective at getting you out of that mode where you're just like, I'm going through things and I'm doing different things. It was great. I would suggest this from my side, like if there were two sixth grade teachers in the next cohort, they probably should try to be some people from the same team because that would have been fun for us. And I can attest that we did talk a lot and so can Samantha, because we never were done with anything. When we were supposed to, you need five more minutes? Yet we really do. Like we went over all the time. Because it was just the kind of conversations we don't get to have on a regular basis at all.
I mean, it's, I, that sounds very commendable that you're so open, all of you to adjusting your practice even later on in your careers and that openness speaks volumes and is wonderful for the district. And to sort of reflect, I, I know the most meaningful educational experiences I had were applied educational experiences in third grade. I remember something in college, taking the economics of higher education, looking at the school budget. It was like, those are really amazing. And I, I heard that you kind of are a little bit agnostic on the technology that's used, but I, and you're sort of suggesting it. And so that allows for a range of skills in it. But I'm wondering if there's also any particular types of technology or like sort of technology skills that you're hoping to also teach, teach through this across different?
Yeah, and, and that was part of the discussion as well is in terms of work. When, when we look to create digital fluency, and I think that's where the authenticity comes from, right? So it's, we can, we learn to keyboard in, in isolation and, you know, make sure we get the words per minute and all that type of stuff. So we can, we can develop skills just by using the technology. I, I think it takes it up to a different appreciation by our students when they can create products through the technology that, that allow them to, to express themselves in so many different ways. So we heard, you know, conversations about podcasts and, and PSAs and, and, and not only the creation of that work, but also the placement of that, you know? So, so it's going to be on the morning announcements or it's, it's going to be on our digital, you know, signage in the hallway or it's, it's going to go up on our website. So, so it's not just submitting it to one person in, in, you know, in the classroom that's going to give you some feedback on it. You get a greater appreciation in terms of, of communication. So, so, and it's, and again, with the technology being an accelerator in so many ways. I mean, some of these skills, at least in terms of using some of the technology, used to be high school level, you know? So here we are in the middle school level, you know, asking our students to take a deeper dive and, and using the tools that they have in front of them in such different ways that, that we, we believe that we're going to get better quality products three, four years from now because we've set a stronger foundation, although it might be more subtle and applied through authentic learning experiences than, than just giving them an opportunity and just kind of name and use these tools. And I don't know if that helps address it, but yeah, that's, I think our intentions.
And I think also, if I may chime in as always, some of the technology use is like in the planning, is like teaching them how to use technology as there's, there's no longer any productivity, you know? 20 years ago, it was you learned PowerPoint. We, we don't really have that direct instruction. So we are kind of, a lot of us are building in sort of how you would use a spreadsheet or, you know, create an organizational planner for yourself to use for your work. But there was a big conversation about content creation, to be honest, because was this 26 years, Marcia? Right?
At least.
I think this is our 26th year here. We don't do a lot below the high school. That's just the reality. I mean, there's like the music media, but there isn't a lot of content creation below a certain age level. And we, a lot of us feel like that's missing, that they're not really doing something with the learning or doing something with the skills as, you know, in an authentic way. So there was that kind of focus. I said to the kids today about the podcast, we were talking about the difference between taking a test and studying for the test. And, and I said, studying was easy. First they looked at me like I was crazy, but my point was that But my point was that the actual process of studying doesn't require more than the process of studying. I've organized my information, I have my ways of going over it, I'm getting ready, I take a test. Creating something is much harder. So I used the example of memorizing a song as compared to composing a song. You know, and what goes into writing as compared to just like mimicking is just so much bigger. And I think that's where a lot of us were thinking, why we focused on those creation pieces? So that it requires them to really use the technology sides to make TikToks.
And I think that, you know, being creators rather than just consumers of technology, that's kind of the big focus, right? Because we want them to create and make sense of their learning, and that's what they're doing. So it's really exciting.
To, I think also the fact that they're delivering their work or publishing their work for an audience outside of the classroom and not just giving it to their teacher to look at and grade. It ups the ante for them and also makes their work more powerful in their eyes and gives them really a chance to have their voices heard. It just changes the way their work, the value of their work, when they're going to be making it for someone else.
Or when they're making it for a peer.
Yeah.
Because that's infinitely more important to them than making it for me.
Yeah. So when it's put on the digital signage or when it's put on the morning news, I know we had, yeah, it really does make a difference. And so they're creating, but they're also creating to be published.
Yeah, I don't really have a question per se, but I really love a couple of aspects about this. One is the collaboration, obviously internally, there's some wonderful collaboration going on. It must be wonderful also to meet with your peers across other districts and to collaborate with them. And trying as that may be, I'm sure that it's super valuable to sort of get that perspective externally. I couldn't help but notice, and we're going to talk about this in Sustainability Committee tomorrow, that a lot of these, so food literacy, even the genetic engineering, I can see have an applicability to sustainability as well as the resource use clearly. And then foundationally, the reading is just a core part of all of that. That there's actually a common thread across all four projects. And I love that you mentioned data science, because to me, at least three of the four projects are generating data and are requiring the students to analyze data and are giving them opportunities to start thinking about data science and what path that may lead them through high school and beyond. So I just think there's some wonderful opportunities here. And maybe it's something to think about bringing the data sets together and trying to find commonality across the data sets, perhaps as an opportunity down the road for, you know, version 2.0 of this. I just, I applaud what you guys are doing. I think it's awesome. It's great that Bosse offers the grant. It's fantastic that we're taking advantage of it, and what a great team. So thank you so much. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
I found this very encouraging. I think that you're touching on so many of the subjects or topics that are so needed today, you know, critical thinking. I think the idea of peer review of the content is very important. Such an important aspect of science is peer review. And that way, more people are learning about the same thing, because you learn as you're doing the review as well. And then this, the data science, like Rory said, I mean, it's such a fundamental concept as statistical significance and confidence intervals and standard deviations are not really, in terms of applicability and real-world use of numbers, when they, when they see all these numbers that they're going to see, one of the questions is, is it real? What does it mean? How do I, how do I quantitate it? What's its size? And I think you're touching on those things, I think, is very exciting. In terms of the peer review, I think it was mentioned in the genetic engineering. How do you see that functioning? How does that, how does that roll out? Will the person reviewing it know enough about the topic to review it effectively?
They shouldn't have to. It's two-part, right? So as a lens of the teacher, there's the facts of the content, right? Like, is the information accurate? And so some of that, I think, goes into the students' English language art skills of evaluating where they're getting their information from. And is it, on the scale of reliability, where is it? Where does it fall? And how much of that information falls at a highly reliable and to not so reliable? The peer review we focused in on as part of the work was a little bit of if, you know, if I have multiple groups that are doing genetic engineering in some way, shape, or form, and maybe there's some overlap there, I think you can then have those groups evaluate each other's work for content accuracy. But I think the other piece that circles back to having an authentic audience and presenting it to others is clarity in your voice, clarity what you're saying and how that comes across. And then it doesn't matter who's reading it. And it's better if you know nothing about the subject, because then you're not internally filling in those gaps. And you're looking at that information saying, what is this person telling me? What is this person not telling me? What am I left wanting to know? And then you can put those pros and cons. And you always do like warm feedback, cool feedback. And we were taught several strategies for giving feedback, whether it's post-it note pluses and minuses, whether it's three people sit, you explain your project, three people sit, and then they say, they discuss your work fishbowl style, very tri-state, right? If you, you know, you just sit and listen to everything they say and take notes. You have to, you know, be critical and you have to be open to being accepting of the criticism. And then what do you do with that? You then have to take it back. So to the degree that they can, you know, look at accuracy, if you're looking at numbers, well, if they have a good sense of how you actually analyze data sets and numbers through a series of mini lessons, did the people follow process? And so that's where building in checklists and rubrics for students to use who need that, because they don't have it inherently, or they don't remember it inherently. There's always something tangible that we had to do in that, through that work. And that's what we'll have, that's what we will do for our kids.
Yeah, we practiced using most of the tools and strategies that we're building into our units. So that was a really great opportunity too. You know, we had great instruction and we were able to apply, try, yea or nay, and then adapt things, which was a real advantage.
As we probe deeper, you're coming up with more stuff. My father agreed with you that all you have to do is have a library card and know how to read.
Yeah.
And the rest is commentary. The other thing, I mean, I can't think of anything more important for this, that, the new generation coming up, that's going to have to solve all the problems we made, is evaluating the source of the information. If you can, you know, that's part of the problem. Everybody can find everything, you can find a group that agrees with them, but is it accurate? Is it valid? What makes me have confidence in it? I can't imagine something more important for them to learn. And you have it all running through all of your projects.
Yeah, it's really important.
Any other comments, questions? Did you want to add anything? Yeah. But not put you on the spot. I feel like you have been an integral part of the conversation. Please, you can join us at the podium if you'd like to.
Oh, wow, hey.
Oh, hi, sorry, I will be very brief. First of all, I don't know if you guys know this yet, but they will be getting student feedback. And they're going to be sending an email out Tuesday morning that is a way for them to collect student voices. So students are going to reflect on what they learned about themselves as learners, what they got out of the project, what they thought about doing something, and then any feedback for their teacher to make changes later. So that's coming out through a padlet. And the teachers are going to collect voices from their students in any modality the students want. So they will be getting that. And I just have to say, listening to them, I felt like a proud teacher. And everything that they are asking their students to do, they did. Marcia talked about the high stakes of like the peer pressure of like sharing your work, and that's what they went through. I mean, they sat with virtual strangers and said, okay, like, here's my baby, what, you know, give me some feedback on it. And like Suzanne said too, this is going, this is being published and shared with the state. So they have been incredible, incredible group to work with. They do talk a lot. It's such good conversation, and it's so deep. And yeah, so thank you for letting me say something.
Of course, yeah. Thank you for joining us tonight, for being here. Thank you, this was terrific. We really appreciate your willingness to update us sort of mid-stream. And thank you for all that's gone into this, and good luck with the rest of your implementation. It was a pleasure, thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, terrific. Are we all here? We're all back. Thank you so much, that was terrific. And we're ready to move on to our next conversation, which is an opportunity to revisit a discussion that we had a couple of meetings ago, where we started to discuss opportunities to revisit the alternative veterans exemption. And at that time, we had asked for some additional context and information, and we're very grateful to the administration. We know that they have really endeavored to answer all the questions to the best of their ability. And tonight's our next opportunity for an update. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Marjorie. So tonight, we've celebrated really wonderful and enthusiastic students, and we just had a really thoughtful presentation from our really thoughtful colleagues. Thank you to all of them. And now we're going to talk about tax exemptions. It does make me wonder if these are, it's a fascinating discussion, it really is, and an important discussion. And I sometimes wonder, was this what people were thinking when they joined a school board? This would be something they would be talking about. But nonetheless, here we are.
Well, we've got to fund all of these amazing opportunities.
We sure do. And I want to give a quick thanks, because typically, Danelle would be here tonight talking us through. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here tonight, but lots of the work behind the scenes. I want to give particular thanks to our treasurer, Kim Parks, and to our business administrator, Lisa Hurley, who in the last days and weeks have put an enormous amount of work into what you're going to see and hear about tonight. And thanks also to our local assessors, who have really worked hard to try and provide us with the numbers that we need. So we, at our previous discussion, we were primarily focused on the alternative veterans exemption. Tonight, we're going to be talking about all four types of exemptions that you see here up on the screen. It makes me feel that it's really important to begin by separating a little bit the respect and the admiration and the gratitude we have for all of the folks who are represented by the titles that you see here on the screen tonight, from the conversation that we're going to be having, to the extent that we can. We honor our veterans every fall, in our secondary schools in particular here. Those honors are important to us. Our administrators, our students take the time because it's important to them, and we agree with them to honor the veterans in our community. We, for many years at a middle school, you've just heard from our middle school colleagues, we open one of our middle school performances to our senior citizens and hope to invite them into our schools. I hope it goes without question that people with disabilities are near and dear to our hearts. And we heard and saw some of our students tonight. And any students and staff and members of our community who live with disabilities are welcomed, affirmed, and respected in our schools and included in every way that we possibly can. And of course, our volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers, some of whom I see in the audience tonight. We're thrilled when our firefighters come to our schools. I will say quickly, we're thrilled when they come to do the demonstrations that they do with our elementary school students that they do annually. And of course, we count on them in the most important occasions to keep us safe, and we're enormously grateful to that. And none of that is changed or impacted or affected by this necessary conversation we have to have about tax exemptions. And it is, as I said before, kind of a fascinating conversation. New York State has chosen to name all of these exemptions and to make them possible for local towns, communities, school boards to consider. But New York State stopped short of mandating these exemptions themselves. And there are certainly advocates who have argued for a long time to say to New York State, please make them, make these exemptions apply equitably across all taxing jurisdictions in the state. Some would say that would be a more equitable approach, while others would argue this is a, this is a different way of doing it, and for good and for bad. Different way, in some ways better, perhaps in some ways not. But it certainly puts the onus on the local authorities here, the school board, but also our local towns that are having the same conversations to make decisions for themselves, decisions that we know will be different across the region. And we know that some of our local school communities, some of our neighbors, some are having the same conversation. Some don't seem to be having the same conversation at the moment. Some have already made decisions, some have not made decisions. And those decisions all vary, I think it's important to say, across the board. So, you know, perhaps that's why in the eyes of New York State, this is left to a local decision as it's thought about as something on the local community level. But it certainly creates its own set of interesting challenges too. So some of these slides that we'll go through first here are a repeat from the last time when we talked about the veterans exemption. So I'll go fairly quickly through these, because I want to get to the information that Board Trustees asked us to provide last time around. Here you see just some definition about how the alternative veterans exemption came into being. First voted on, first enacted in 2013. In our district, in 2015, the Cottone Board enacted the veterans exemption at the levels you see up there. And you'll see in a moment, there are three different types of veterans exemption. And more recently, there's been the opportunity to look at this again and look at it differently. The veterans exemption here, it's defined as to who it applies to, who the qualified owners are. I'm not going to dwell on these definitions again, because we did go through this the last time. But here are the veterans for whom these exemptions can apply, must have been in active duty during one of these periods of war and been honorably discharged. So it's not to think that every possible veteran out there is eligible for these. And then there are three types of exemptions. And when you see the three different numbers that you'll see repeated throughout, they apply to these three different types of exemptions. And you see up there, the wartime veteran non-combat, the wartime veteran who was in combat zone, and the wartime veteran who is disabled. So those equate to the three different types of exemptions. And you see here, in the three different categories, that back in 2015, Cottone Lewisburg adopted the exemptions that you see in that middle column at the levels of 12, 8, and 40,000. And now more recently, Westchester County has allowed, again, and New York State first, and then Westchester County followed, to allow the potential of going up to that higher level that you see represented in the right-hand column. And this shows you that, just to complicate it further, this is not an either-or choice. School districts and local towns can choose from all the different levels between what is the current level and the maximum that you see at the bottom of the screen. And it's because we're considered a higher appreciation municipality that we can be in that lower box that you see that goes all the way up to that maximum level of a $75,000, $50,000, or $250,000 reduction. The next slide, which we again showed previously, this was a survey done of local districts. It doesn't represent all the districts. It's, I think, 31 districts who responded to the survey and where they were at the time of the survey in terms of the exemptions that they offered veterans. So you can see the largest group, 21 out of the 30, fell into the same category that Cottone Lewisburg currently falls into, the 12, 8, and the 40. The next largest group is the six at that $54,000, 36, $880,000. And then you see others in other categories, and one school district at that time up at the maximum of the 75, the 50, and the 250,000. So that's just to give some sense of where local districts are in this matter. The next slide, veterans can qualify for multiple exemptions at the same time. It could be only the wartime, it could be the wartime and combat combined, or it could be wartime disability or wartime combat and disability exemption combined. And to the extent that a veteran is eligible for more than one, the exemptions are cumulative, and not all veterans will be eligible for each of the exemptions. So then, and this now, we start to get to one of the places where the board asks for some additional information. So this slide is similar to, but not exactly the same as it was last time. Probably even harder to read now, because there are more columns that you see here. So what this shows, across the top row there, you see a range of the possible exemptions, starting in the first. First, you actually see the number in the town of Lewisburg, the number of veterans who are eligible in each of those categories. Then you see in the current reduction, the taxable assessed value of 12, 8, and 40, you see the actual impact on taxable assessed value of property in dollar amounts from the lowest to the highest, and you see it there across the board. And you see it there across the board. And that's the reduction on the assessed value in terms of dollar amounts. The next slide shows the actual impact on tax payments in terms of a reduction on the individual tax payments for the veterans themselves, on average, as you go through, again, the different categories. So, this is, in my mind, a little bit easier to interpret. This shows you for the individual veteran, on average, if they fall into one of those categories, and remember, they are cumulative, they can be cumulative if they qualify in more than one category, what their tax reduction is in a dollar amount in the column that currently exists, the 12, 8, and 40, and then what it could be depending on decisions boards may or may not make moving across. I should say, if there are questions at any time, please, yeah.
I'm trying to understand the... So, let's take the maximum.
Yep.
So, the 250,000 applied is... Up to 250,000 of the assessed value can be reduced by a certain percentage? Because then, because the actual, like, the maximum actual reduction is 20,000.
Right.
So, it's a fraction of the... There's two things moving. It's the percentage and then there's also how much of the value can be affected. Okay.
It's a complex calculation because it's not just...
Right, it's not simply saying that they can take 250,000 off the value of the house. It's a fraction of that.
Correct.
And then, so that's why you're saying the next one's a little bit more digestible.
I think it's correct.
It's showing kind of what, how much people would actually get, the average...
Tax reduction that a person would experience.
Yeah.
Correct. Again, on average.
So, would calculating that all together, like, the sort of, if we were to look at the last column and look at the average and then sort of multiply it by the number of people, would that give us a sense of the tax base that we would be needing to shift?
We can, we'll show you that on the later slide.
Okay.
So, we've shown you two slides for the town of Lewisburg. We have the same two slides for the town of Bedford. So, the first one, again, really the same, obviously for a different town, slightly different taxing numbers. I'll go to the second slide that shows the actual individual amounts for those individuals who fall into these categories by which their taxes would be reduced, again, on average and could be combined. And then, if we go to the next slide, I think we start to speak to, I think, the question that Bill was perhaps asking. So, what this shows, first, the box that's in the lower left shows the total dollar amounts for all the veterans combined in terms of what would be shifted to, from that taxing group. And I should say here, actually, because I think, I was doing some reading, when these exemptions first came in to being, the thinking was that they might actually cause school districts to cut programs because it would reduce the taxes coming into the district. It hasn't played out that way and that's where this slide becomes important. It hasn't reduced the overall tax revenue for the district, it shifted the taxes of the taxpayers in the community. And that's what this, and that's been true around the state. So, this shows you what that tax shift is. In the box on the left, it shows it on a total basis. And then the box on the right, and I do want to be careful to point out here, the bottom row in the box on the right is showing the increase in the tax shift to individuals if we go to those levels. So, what that means is, in that first column where it says zero, that's because that's the current amount that people are paying. So, there is already some shift. That shift is actually about $12 per person on average. But we're showing it as zero there because if it stays the same, there's no additional increase on the current $12. And then the columns moving to the right from there show you what the increase would be. Is that making sense to everybody? So, that's Lewisburg. And then the next slide shows Bedford, the same concept for Bedford, the total amounts on the left and the individual increases to individual tax, non-exempt taxpayers if the board makes the decisions to move to those higher levels. There. Then the next slide just speaks to the number currently of eligible veterans. I think these are repeats from what you saw in the earlier slides, actually. And from there, I think we begin to move to some of the other categories. So, now, this is new information that we didn't have the last time we spoke, because the board asked thoughtfully about, well, what other exemptions are out there? So, we're coming back. The senior citizens exemption has been, and both of these exemptions have been in place for quite some time. They were adopted by school district quite some time ago, in 2007. I think they were last, in a sense, kind of renewed and adopted, and that's where the levels have been since then. And now, different from the veterans exemptions, I think, and I think I'm going to say it here on a slide in a minute, yeah. So, this next slide says that there have been some recent changes towards the end of last year in New York State law that allows boards to consider changes to the exemptions related to senior citizens and persons with disabilities. Unlike the alternative veterans exemption, these changes are not about the levels of exemption. These changes are about the income eligibility that allows people to receive the exemptions. Once you're receiving them, the exemptions themselves aren't changing. It's the eligibility into that based on income. And both for seniors and for persons with disabilities, these are income-connected eligibility requirements, as opposed to the veterans which are not related to income. Moving ahead to the next slide, now you see the potential change. So, in the left-hand side of the box, the current eligibility for seniors or a person with disability who earns less than $29,000 in gross income, that person is eligible for a 50% reduction in their assessed value that is taxed. And then going up a little bit from there, if their earnings are between $29,000 but lower than, lower than $37,400, which is why you see that funny number with all the nines, then it's on a sliding scale from 45% for the lowest level of income down to 5% for the highest level of income in that category. So, that's what is current and what has been.
So, this senior citizen makes, is in the 20,000, so they're under 29,000.
Yeah.
The 50% exemption means that their house that is assessed at $100,000 will be taxed at 50,000?
I believe that's correct. I believe that's correct. This is why the assessors have been so valuable to us these last few weeks, but I do think that that's accurate. And so, this new law passed towards the end of last year has raised, allowed for the local option to raise the income level. And you see there, on the right-hand side, the board has the option to declare that the new entrance level income is less than 50,000 rather than, a gross income of 50,000, rather than less than 29,000 to qualify for the 50%. And then you see between 50,000 and that 58,399 qualify on that sliding scale from 45% down to 5% reduction. So, that's what's to be considered. And then, on the next slide, we can show, but I want to be very, oops, I went over it. I want to be very careful to show, explain this carefully. So, both the Bedford and Lewisburg assessors were very candid with us and said they can't project what this would look like if the district decided to make the change because they don't know how many people would qualify under the new income levels. And they won't know that until people declare their income, and that doesn't happen until May 1st, I believe, is the deadline. So, the numbers that you're looking at here are the existing numbers based on the current parameters of the average dollar amount that's redistributed to each non-exempt taxpayer. First, based on the senior citizens exemption, so you see that number of $42.79, that's in the town of Lewisburg. And then, same thing for senior citizens in the town of Bedford, it's the lower number of $6.03. And then, same thing, person with disabilities, it's the smaller number, $1.77. And I believe there are no qualifying persons with disability in town of Bedford at the moment, which is why that's NA in that box there. Again, that's not projecting ahead to any change. That's what is, you know, one might, you know, I want to be careful here not to make any assumptions because we don't know. One might think that with a higher income level, perhaps more people would then qualify and those numbers would go up. But in terms of projecting what that would be, it's, I wouldn't want to...
It gives you a ballpark.
It gives you what's currently shifted and I think it could, I think it would be reasonable to assume it will go up some. But to what amount, it's really hard to say.
Just to clarify, the as-is, to connect this to some of the earlier slides, as a result of the decision that was made around the alternative veterans exemption previously, it's approximately in Lewisburg, let's say, $12 per household that's been shifted, plus, to stick with Lewispro, $42.79 that has been shifted, just in terms of the as-is.
Correct.
And do we have any sense of how many individuals are contributing to the $42.79 being redistributed? I ask only because if we had a sense of how many people are qualifying under the current threshold, it might help us to anticipate a little bit how many might qualify if we move from the current income level threshold to the $50,000 threshold.
So, I do know, I'm afraid I don't know it for Bedford. I do know for Lewisburg that there are, you're asking how many senior citizens essentially qualify?
In this case, yeah.
There are 74 senior citizens and I think the number of persons with disabilities is seven qualify there.
Thank you.
I don't, I just don't have the same information. So, that was those two types of exemptions. And now, we move on to the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. And similarly here, it was, you can see late last year, new New York State legislation allows local governments to reduce what was previously a five-year minimum service requirement for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers to be eligible for up to a 10%, reduction on the assessed valuation. New legislation now allows the minimum service requirement to be between two and five years. And then, I added this, this is a quote from the law. And I put this in particularly because I had a conversation with town supervisor Concalves a couple of days ago, which was helpful to me. So, the language here says that the authority having jurisdiction must certify that the volunteer is a member of the fire company, fire department, or ambulance service as applicable. And as I understand it, the town is still thinking through, you know, what's that language going to be and what's that process going to look like that's going to allow us to certify that someone is an active member of the volunteer fire department or the volunteer ambulance service? And I believe the town is revisiting that conversation at next meeting, which I think is the 27th.
And we would go with what they said. I mean, we don't have, school doesn't have to make this determination, the town will.
We don't, we can make a different decision from them, I believe, in terms of whether we go to the two years or something in between. But I think we're going to rely on them because the assessor is with them as to how individuals are certified.
And how are the other exemptions, is it also the same thing that a senior citizen goes to the assessor or a veteran goes to the assessor and applies for it?
I believe so, yeah. It's not through us. Any other questions there?
I was just curious, sort of, on the other, on the senior and disabled related to income, could we choose any number up to the 50,000 or does it have to be? It has to be?
This is not a, this is not a choice. It's an either, either we stay at the current levels or we move to the higher one.
Okay. And then, for this one, does it have to be two, we change it to two years or, I mean, I know that came into us as a question.
This is, it's a great question. And it's another place where I think New York State is, I mean, it's kind of fascinating that they make the decision the way they do. So, as the law reads, you could choose to go somewhere between two and five. But I have to think it's going to be awfully difficult for the local assessors if this school district decides to go with three years and town of Lewisburg decides to go with four years and Bedford schools decide, you know, and there's overlap in some of our communities. And so, I can't say that I recommend picking something in between because I'm not hearing people discuss something in between, but the law does say you can do that for good and for what that's worth. Okay, so, next slide here, so comparable numbers here. This is, again, we can't project because we don't know how many more would be eligible if the requirements change. So, these are current numbers. And again, this is the average dollar amount that's redistributed to each non-exempt taxpayer and I'll anticipate, same question again. Again, I don't know the number for Bedford, but in Lewisburg, the number of eligible firefighters and ambulance workers is a number in the 70s. I'm sorry, I'm not recalling exactly what it is, but I'm confident that it's a number in the 70s and that's resulting in the dollar amounts that you see there. So, in the next slide, I just tried to summarize possible exemptions. And so, and I put some asterisks because they're different. The numbers represent different things, so I want to try and be as clear as possible. So, the veterans, those are projected numbers. If the board was to decide to make changes, then the tax shift to non-exempt taxpayers would be between the $12.34 and the $64.75 if it was to go over the maximum versus in Bedford, $10.61 versus $50.65 if you went all the way to the maximum. And of course, all different numbers in between if you chose something in between. And then, all the other numbers below are not projections, those are the current amounts that are, whether you make a change, well, if you don't make a change, those are the, those numbers will be consistent moving forward. If you do make a change, those numbers are likely to go up, we don't know to what degree.
You list senior citizens and persons with disabilities separately.
Yeah.
But is it an option to separate those two? Could we say something different for senior? I mean, it's presented on the same...
Yeah, it's another really good question. When I look at the law, they appear to be two separate laws, but they're often kind of lumped together because they do, the income levels are the same, perhaps that's why. And that's something we can get further clarity on, but my initial reaction is to say you could decide separately. But I don't, I'm not 100% certain on that.
Thanks.
I'll check. Any other questions on? So, then, in the next section, we're going to look at community feedback. So, board asked us to try to seek feedback from the community. I put a note on this slide because the numbers, all those numbers that we've just showed, we've just showed for the first time, and the community didn't have access. They did have access to the numbers for the veterans because we had showed those previously, but we've been working recently to develop all those other numbers. So, the community didn't have access to those numbers. So, we had to just ask them these questions conceptually, you know, how would you respond if, kind of thing. And we've got terrific number of responses, which I'll show you on the next slide. So, this recent survey, 560 surveys came back. You can see there, the largest number from the town of Lewisburg, 419, 123 from the town of Bedford, and then 11 and 7 from the North Salem and Pound Ridge, respectively. So, certainly a terrific response to our survey. You know, I'll quickly say, in terms of just school district alone, I believe we have approximately 1,400 families, a lot more families than the community as a whole. Terms of a survey itself, that's a pretty decent number of responses in terms of percentage of the community. I couldn't tell you, to be quite honest, what percentage of the community that reflects. We did ask for one response per household. And then, next slide shows, we asked folks to the best of their ability, and obviously, this is all self-reported data. I think it's important to put that out there upfront, all self-reported. We asked folks to let us know whether they or any members of their family, as far as they understood it, are eligible for the following exemptions. You can see the numbers there with the very largest number saying they don't believe that they have any eligibility in their household, but you can see how the other numbers break down. Then, we'll get to the questions that people are curious about. First one being, your perspective on whether the school should increase the alternative veterans exemption? And we asked, did the board keep it the same? Did the board increase it to an amount that's greater than the current amount but not to the maximum? And should we increase it to the maximum allowable level? And you can see, I'll just read the percentages, you can see about a third said keep it where it is, 15% said go to something in between, and 52% go to the maximum. On the next slide, you'll see exemption for senior citizens. And here, it was just because there are just two choices here, there is no in-between. So, you can see 39% said, suggested to keep it where it is, 61% suggested move to the higher level. Next slide, persons with disabilities, similar numbers, 40% suggesting keep it where it is, 60% saying to move it to the highest level. And the final one, firefighters and ambulance workers, 48% suggesting maintaining the current five-year service requirement, 52% saying to go from the five-year to the two-year. So, and next, in terms of next steps, the question to the board is, do you want to modify the limits for veterans exemptions? And if so, you've got a whole range of limits to think about there, complicated decision. And the next question, does the board want to modify the eligibility? And the next question, does the board want to modify the eligibility requirements for the other subgroup? And if the board wants to make changes, it's a relatively simple process for us. We wouldn't, we, we have to hold what's called a public hearing, which would look very much like this. But we have to notice it as public hearing. We would intend potentially, we could, we could notice any meeting and down the road. If adopted, and, and at that public hearing, the board would simply adopt a resolution with whichever changes or not the board decided upon. The earliest these things could go into effect. This would require action relatively soon for the, for the changes to, because, because the assessors have essentially said to us, they generally need this information by March first for it to go. So that is soon. So if it's going to happen for the twenty twenty three assessment year, which impacts the twenty four twenty five school year, we're talking about our next Board of Ed meeting for that public hearing. But there's not, it's not a requirement that a board make this decision now. It can be thinking about it. There are, there, I can tell you, there are some school boards that have said, we're not making any changes. And then there is, I can think of a couple of others that have already said, we're going to make some changes. And then there's lots of others that I think are just not talking about it just yet. So you have a lot of options in front of you. That brings us to questions.
That was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frames it.
The information is really helpful to us. It is a peculiar role for a Board of Education to be deliberating opportunities for exemptions. But to the extent that that's our responsibility, I think you've really helped us to feel well-prepared. We have a lot, if not all of the information that we asked for. And to the extent that we don't have it, you know, we're able to make, you know, really reasonably informed decisions based on what we anticipate might happen. So thank you very much for that. Just to clarify with regard to the public hearing, so it is envisioned that we would take a board meeting, our next board meeting, and just announce that that is also serving as the public hearing for.
That would be an option to do it that way.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that, that would be if we wanted to implement it this, for this coming tax season?
That would be the timing necessary for it to happen in the soonest possible taxing season. Yeah.
So that, is that our first question that we want to establish? So my personal preference would be that we make some decisions prior to the next tax year. I think we've started discussing this early enough in the year at our last minute allows us to do so. And I think it would be good to just not hang this up for another whole season. That would be my preference. And I don't know how people feel about that. I mean, I think we should decide.
We will make changes. If we make no changes, then it's irrelevant.
Decide something, yeah.
I think what Julie is saying, if I understand correctly, is she is suggesting that we make, I thought you were actually going further and suggesting that we should make changes?
Well, I, sure, yes, that too, but.
I would think it's helpful just to sort of start the conversation. So if, if we can take that step further, Julie's suggesting, let's make some changes, let's propose some changes. And I think it would be really helpful if somebody would like to speak to whether they're feeling inclined to not make changes, just so we can first have that conversation. If we're all in agreement to make changes, then we can move forward in that direction. But I think that is the first question is, are we trying to move forward in accordance with the timeline that allows us to make changes or enables us to make changes for this coming?
I, I think, I think so. I would think there'd be changes. That's my position.
Yeah, I don't like to be rushed, but I think we have a lot of good data and I think we probably will make some changes.
Elon, are you in agreement with that or are you?
Yeah, definitely. Absolutely. And I, this is sort of, this presentation was really helpful and framed on kind of thinking about the adjustment of where the taxes would go. We, we got some really great letters from the community over email about, you know, why the exemptions are important or how, how it would benefit, for example, the fire department to help retain people, which is obviously very important. I am curious about sort of how, like, I, I want to hear, like, sort of, when we do this, it has this impact. Not just, like, it will aid this many seniors in having more income for other things, or you know what I mean? Like, just kind of what is the impact, the positive impact of these exemptions on people? I, I think I have a very good sense of it from the communication that we received from the community, from the volunteer fire departments and ambulance corps. I, I am curious about sort of the need and it's like, is it, is it just, is this an, a movement to just honor the very important work of everybody in the community in terms of veterans and volunteer ambulance corps? And then, you know, the seniors and disabled is much more tied to income. And so is there, I think the question is among the veteran community, is there a need or is this also, is it just kind of a symbolic gesture?
And the numbers are in, I mean, in terms of how many people it affects, I don't think that would change. Right? The slide that you gave about the number of veterans in each category would be a good approximation because we're not changing any thresholds. It's just what the numbers would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm just asking, like, I just don't, I'm not as familiar with our veteran population and kind of what the need is. And, and just, just to kind of understand how this, how this helps and what this, what this does.
Well, I mean, I would think especially for the veterans who are in the more further past wartime veterans, there are clearly many of them living on a fixed income at this point in their lives. And so I think if inflation is going up and their taxes could be decreased, it certainly gives them an opportunity to stay in our community, be a part of the community and maintain their households. So you know, I think that's the, that's the thrust of the intent.
Yeah, that, that's really helpful. And just, just a quick search. I'm looking at the senior levels and the disabled levels is that, I mean, twenty nine thousand dollars in today's dollars is like forty one thousand. So we're already way behind on that. We wanted to keep doing that.
I mean, the inflation change since the law was enacted.
Yes. Or since, since this district also chose, put that into place. I don't know if it, what it.
I don't.
You said two thousand and seven was when we started.
Right. But, but to be clear, it hasn't been an option to change it.
I, you're totally right, right, right. But that, but just kind of just.
Changes, yeah.
Yeah.
So can I, I mean, is it okay if we start talking numbers? So I, I mean, I guess, I feel like it's important for me just from a transparency so that the community understands. I am, my husband actually is a firefighter, but we are already past five years. So this change from five years to less wouldn't personally affect our family. But I just want to make sure it's known that this is a population that I'm familiar with and people who I know. So I just want to be transparent about that. I, I think I'm inclined to look at the feedback from the community. And I think, when I think about it in terms of the veterans exemption, you know, clearly the majority are asking us to increase to the maximum. But if you add the no change and the, and the somewhere in between, that's, it's about a fifty fifty split. So I think when I see that, I'm inclined to think about maybe going to the level that is one level below the maximum, which seems to also be where some other districts have fallen. The six districts that are on that pie chart are in that fifty four thirty six one eighty section. And I think in terms of sort of satisfying people that want us to go to some level below the maximum and not to make a change, there's sort of a bigger jump between that level and the next in terms of the impact on taxpayers. It's the difference between the forty five thirty one fifty, the fifty four thirty six and one eighty is just ten dollars where it's a, it's a twenty dollar change if we go to the maximum, goes from forty three to sixty four shift in tax. Sorry, I'm on slide sixteen. So anyway, so I mean, I just, that's, I just want to tell you what I'm thinking about. I'm thinking that might be a good place to land. I, I'm a little bit more concerned about the fact that the community, at least in terms of their feedback, is split very fifty fifty around the firefighter exemption. And this is where I wanted to be clear that this is a population I know. I think because the exemption requires that you be active and have that status, I think there might be some perception that someone could be a firefighter for two years and then year three, they just get it because they were already in the department. But each year you have to be certified as an active firefighter, which requires a certain amount of engagement with training, calls, et cetera. And I think we, you know, could be assured that that is part of what's provided to the assessor's office, office every year. So I, I think we've seen this in our own PTOs and in our own community in terms of just the challenge in getting volunteers is real. And this is, you know, more than just showing up and working at concession stand for two hours. This is getting out of your bed in the middle of the night and responding to a call. And the training that's required is pretty significant. So I think anything we can do from a taxpayer perspective, you know, not paying for paid firefighters is a benefit that we have living in New York State where in communities like ours, we have volunteer fire departments. So I think, you know, the risk is if the number of firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers declines enough that we can no longer have it be a volunteer system and we have to start paying for a system, the tax dollars will be more than the offset of, of giving this benefit. So. So again, I want to be respectful of the feedback from the community, which again is split fifty fifty, which inclines me to maybe think we would do something between two and five, but I personally would just go to the two and know that they have to be active to get the benefit.
Of all the numbers on, in the whole presentation, that's the one that shocked me the most is that the community was split fifty fifty on that. I personally think it's a no-brainer that we, that we move it for firefighters and ambulance, those, those folks who, as you say, work, work hard and get up out of bed in the middle of the night for all of us. I mean, I, I don't think there's, there should be an argument there at all. I really don't. It's a volunteer community. And I think it's, yeah, there's a lot of towns where people pay for fire services and we're not one of them.
Yeah, I think just to simplify the conversation, you know, I'm in complete agreement. And so maybe this is one area where, you know, if we can just stay on exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. You know, I think what I'm hearing so far is that those who have spoken
Yeah, five to two is fine.
Would like to move to the two.
Yeah.
And so just for the notes and for keeping track, I, I think we're there.
That one is there.
I think a question I would like to ask, and I didn't mean to cut you off if you were waiting to say something first about what we just spoke about. Were you on that topic of the volunteer firefighters, Elon? I feel like you were reaching in to say something.
I mean, I just, no, it was a not important one.
Okay. So just moving.
And I just, I really hate to complicate it, but that's also the one that the town is going to discuss again on the twenty seventh. And it, it might create a complication for us if there's still something the town has to work out before we're able to.
Because I think the town determines it and then we just agree with the town.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get in touch with them.
That's the feeling of the board, at least.
That we're intending to go down if that's possible.
We, we defer to the town to make the decisions, obviously, with regard to who's eligible. That's completely in their purview. And then it would be helpful to hear from them what they're thinking about the interpretation of the law and whether they would be planning to do something other than go down to two. But.
The tax impact from the school district is far higher than the tax impact from the town. So if the town decided, oh, we're going to go to four or we're going to stay at five, then I think we need to have that conversation again because I'm not sure I would want to defer to the town on the, on the eligibility. I'm fine.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't mean to overcomplicate it. I don't think the town is necessarily going in that direction. I was just trying to say that if they haven't, I think Kim and I have to resolve a question as to the timing of whether we can adopt, whether the board can adopt a resolution before the town has done what it needs to do.
They do the eligibility, we decide the number.
And with regard to eligibility, I'm not speaking about the numbers of years. With regard to eligibility, I'm speaking about who qualifies as an active.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Volunteer firefighter. We, we can't.
We're good.
We're not involved in this. So, so there are some outstanding questions there, but at least the will of our board is, you know, articulated on, on that, which is helpful. I think I just want to ask about the biggest piece of the equation that is unknown, as I understand it, which is what might happen because we don't have an option to go to anything in between the current income threshold for senior citizens or disabled members of our community. We have to go to the highest, right? There, there's only one option. But we don't have any way of anticipating yet.
How many more people that would be?
How many more people are with the impact? And when I think about the reality that although we might not have known this because this was adopted by a board back in two thousand and seven, as it turns out, we now know that approximately forty three dollars has been shifted to non-elderly, non-disabled members of the community since two thousand. Well, at least today, it's, this is what it is today.
Right.
And that is as, as significant an amount of shifted tax levy as the amount that you were proposing that we would potentially go to if we were to move to the bracket that you pointed us to or to which you pointed us. And so this is, I think, a place where we might want to spend a few minutes with regard to what, what we might propose to do for our elderly and disabled community members. If the will of the board is to make a change there and to go in the new direction for the reasons that have already been articulated, right? I mean, there's a reason the state is putting this in front of us now. Without knowing the potential impact, does that cause our board to want to be a little bit more risk averse with regard to how high we can adjust for our veterans at this time, knowing that we can revisit this again in a year, right? We're going to make a change presumably, or possibly, we're going to make a change for the veterans. But are we able to go as high as we might otherwise go when we aren't able to anticipate the full impact to the taxpayer? And I say this because I'm also thinking here about the bond referendum where we did help our taxpayers to understand the potential annual impact of the anticipated increase to the levy. And I just think we want to be careful in thinking about the total dollar amount that we shift and not wanting to inadvertently ask certain taxpayers to pay the amount we just asked them to pay with the bond referendum and a shifted amount of levy that is potentially, I, I won't say higher than that, but approx, you know, getting close to that. So it's just, it's an unknown and I would like to know how the rest of you feel about that unknown and how to, how to act in this moment for this year, knowing we don't have to only do this once. And also whether with regard to our elderly community members and disabled community members, would it be the feeling of the board that we aren't able to go to the highest until we have more information? But how would we have that information until people apply for it? So could you all please share how you're thinking about that?
Just clarifying point on that. It doesn't, it seems to me that that's not an apples to apples comparison though, right? Because the, for the seniors and disabled, it's an actual, it's just a money amount, right? But the other, for the veterans, it has to do with your parcel. And so there's, there's like a, or the assessed value. It's, it's variable, the impact in a different way, like the numbers would.
I'm speaking about the impact to individuals who don't qualify for any exemption.
Right, right, right.
So the forty two dollars is the shifted amount experienced by the average homeowner who is not qualifying for any of the exemptions.
So if that number quadrupled, let's say, like, like we, let's say we made an assumption that that number just doubled, right? If we go up to fifty, it's going to double the number of households that are eligible. So that goes from.
We think, we actually have no idea.
But what if it, what if it quintupled and it's five times and now it's actually shifting two hundred and fifty dollars instead of forty dollars? And so now we have the two hundred and fifty, we've gone to this whatever level on the veterans. We have the, now it's, I mean, we know it's going to be about twelve additional firefighters, whatever. So I mean, I think what Marjorie's saying is, given that we don't know, we have no idea what that number is, should we do? I didn't think about this, but this is interesting. Like go to maybe the thirty six twenty four one twenty veterans exemption level this year. See how many, see what the tax shift is from the additional residents who are under the fifty nine thousand dollar threshold. And if it's not a significant jump, it would allow us to add to the veterans exemption without the total number getting maybe too high.
I'm, first of all, I have two, I have two issues with this. One is if we don't have the data today, what has to change in order for us to get the data?
We can't.
We can't.
So we're guessed. So when do we know?
We guess no matter, we'll never know.
And then why penalize the veterans? Because we don't know what the impact of the seniors would be. I mean, if we're, if we're inclined to provide this benefit to veterans, then really, and I understand it's all about dollar shifting, I get it. But if we're inclined to provide this benefit to veterans, then why would we temper that because we're unsure with no, no reasonable way of finding certainty about the impact of a senior change, which is optional to us. It's optional to us. So for me, if, if we're inclined to provide a benefit for veterans, then that's what we should do in a bona fide way. And then when, when we can find the data around seniors and the impact on seniors and people with disabilities, then we address that.
We can't get the data. We don't get the data after we enact it.
Do it.
It's not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. You might, you might be entirely right. But I would want to go back to the assessors because not clear to me whether the seniors report their gross income. Whether they're, would they only be doing that if they were applying?
Yeah, the assessor doesn't know their gross income.
Okay.
I think, I think this goes back to, you know, questions about the, the nature of the exemptions. You know, the, the exemption for elderly and disabled members of the community is tied to income thresholds that are out of date and out of touch. And so from the perspective of wanting it to remain affordable for elderly and disabled community members to live within our community and support our schools, which is not optional. You know, I think this would be a question for us. I, I think, I think what I'm understanding. You know, I think this would be a question for us. I, I think, I think what I'm understanding is we aren't going to know the impact of making a change to the elderly and disabled exemption. And after we make the change, and and I guess the question is what happens after you make the change? And then if the impact to those who don't benefit from the exemptions is so great that the community comes out and says, could you undo what you did? I mean, is it possible? Probably not easy to do. But if we were to move to the new levels for elderly and disabled community members and thereby understand the impact to those who aren't able to benefit from any exemptions, this can be incremental for any other change we make to our veteran population. We can make a change now and we can make an additional change in the future after we better understand the impact is just, it's just a possibility. It's an incremental approach potentially, but I'm not suggesting that's what we should do. I'm simply asking us to consider, you know, whether we feel we're able to make the the change for elderly and disabled community members. I think the intention here on the part of the state is to rectify circumstances whereby these income thresholds have not been adjusted since 2007, thereby making it pretty unaffordable for.
I think underneath this is sort of a question about also the compounded impact of all these.
Yes.
Of all these exemptions. And and what's one question that's coming up for me is could, can you be, you know, kind of the most exempted veteran and also a senior that qualifies? I mean, and I would think those people would absolutely need it more, you know, and that we'd want to that. And I think, I mean, the other thing that this sort of brings up for me is, you know, living in a community that has a lot of age diversity. You know, I think the school, as Rory said, the school taxes are our largest part of our tax bill. And yet, obviously, the schools also add property value and educate our students. And I think people are very dedicated to our public schools, which is wonderful. And also it's, it's hard for some people to stay here with such high school taxes when they're not necessarily benefiting. There's not a lot of options to do that. And so one thing, I mean, I, I mean, I feel very inclined to do this. And also I, I would be curious. I would be helpful to have, I think, more feedback from people. You know, I think it's helpful for us to put out kind of a proposal tonight so that when we have this public hearing, people can give us more specific feedback and responses. And it would really help us to kind of not make a decision based on what we believe, but kind of what the community also wants, particularly related to their own taxes. But I think that question of like, what, I don't know if we can do this, but like, what, what is a compounded? If we did everything, what does that look like to the taxpayers?
$158. If we went to the maximum veterans exemption, we assumed a 50% overall increase in both the population. The, so not doubling it, but 50% increase, meaning so like if it's 40, it becomes 60.
Yeah.
And then we reduce the firefighter and we assume a small increase in that. I came up with $158.09. So that's the compounded. I mean, that's a total.
And that's the average.
That would be the average. But it was, I mean, would it be hospital? I don't tell, but like, would a median number also give us another number to kind of have some perspective in this? I don't know that you can actually do that with this.
I mean, I think we have to frame the question. I think we're in agreement that we would go from five to two years for the firefighters and ambulance. I believe we're in agreement that we would go to the higher salary, the higher income for the disabled and senior citizens. So those are over here. Now.
I think Rory might want to speak to that. I think that's a good way to frame it, but let's stick with that for a minute. And do you want to speak to it?
Bills analysis, but I'm not sure that I'm there. I mean, to the extent that there's a trade off, and I'm not even sure there is a trade off, right, between, well, do we, do we allocate the full exemption to veterans and then not allocate anything to seniors? Or do we allocate everything to seniors because it's kind of black or white? And then reduce the exemption potentially to veterans because that's more of a sliding scale. To me, we have to have a conversation around, well, what's our intent? And to, to what extent do we want to benefit seniors and people with disabilities versus veterans if there is a trade off there? It's an uncomfortable trade off.
Well, I mean, I guess one thing I would say is if you look at the, the war years, the majority, well, I shouldn't say that, but so if you look at slide six in terms of in what period of time the veteran may have been in active duty, it's likely that at least three quarters of the veterans will be seniors.
Yeah, good point.
So they that's somewhat, to me, that's like somewhat of the the reassurance wire. If we go to the cap on the income, we are capturing a, a big percentage of the veteran population who would get also the veteran exemption are captured in that way.
I could add to that, we're capturing our most economically vulnerable veterans and seniors, which from my perspective is really an objective here is to try to assist those who are most economically vulnerable in addition to any symbolic honoring. I think there is an enormous opportunity there in enacting the new limits, the new income limits for elderly and disabled community members who benefit the most economically vulnerable members of the community. That's it's a compounded benefit.
Right, right.
For, for not only the elderly and or disabled, but also for veterans.
Right. So veteran, disabled and older veterans would all, would get, would benefit from that.
Compounded benefit.
I mean, you said that just based on the years, but do we know that among these numbers? I mean, because it, because it still has like 1990 to current service people. So. Okay.
That's 32 years.
Yeah. So that means that includes everybody essentially who's a, is a veteran. So I don't, I'm just.
I'm guestimating.
Okay.
It's half, let's just say it's 50 50.
Right. I mean, there's clearly a lot that we don't know in this. And so I think the questions are like, what's our intention with this? And then we put that out there and I think ask for more feedback. And I mean, I know we got, we sent this to the district, which was great. And we got a lot of, it seemed like we got proportional feedback based on kind of where, how the school district is. But I also wonder if we sent it out through the town or through, you know, it's just other means to get people who might not be as connected with the school district, who, who might feel a lot stronger about this, who, you know, maybe more of the impacted population to make sure that they're part of this process.
I think it's going to be very hard to get somebody else to make the decision for us. I think.
Well, I don't want somebody else to make a decision.
All people and it'll be 37, it'll be 70, 30, it'll be 40, 60, it'll be 50 50.
But Bill, you were on to something a minute ago when you said, let's frame it out. And I think you were saying we've got these two things over here. And I think we're hearing that we do have these two things over here that we would like to move towards.
I'd like to move the discussion then, because those things, I believe we have four votes for. Those are done. And then it, now the discussion is what level should we pick for the veterans? In the thinking about that, we could consider that while we've just already shifted more money over here, so we might want to be, have some mindfulness of how much we're shifting over here. But I wouldn't frame it as we're picking one group that we favor more than the other. I mean, I am imagining we're going to end up increasing the, the veterans' numbers. So, I mean, it might not be all the way. We'll have to talk about that, but it's going to go up. So I, I would sort of say that, you know, just in terms of clarity for the community, which issues do we believe are settled, at least as far as the board? This must be a public hearing and the board can change its mind based on the public hearing. And then now we can focus on our thoughts around what, what the veteran number should be. And I liked Julia's analysis on slide.
16.
16 and 17. That there. I mean, there's a lot more number of choices. If you look, if you look at slide nine, I mean, there's lots of choices. You know, in between the 54, 36, 180 and the 75, you know, the bottom one. So there's more than this example shows on slide 16, but it, it gives you a sense of the, of the, of what the slope of the line is. I and gets, gets, you know, gets higher at the higher numbers. But on the other hand, the veteran numbers, I think to some degree, we know the numbers because we have slides that, you know, in terms of, I, I agree, 1990 to now is a long period. But, you know, absent an in, a huge influx of veterans into the community, we sort of have a sense of how, how many people are in each group. And it's not a large number. Just isn't. I mean, I think the only number that is going to get, might get big would be the percent of the number of senior citizens. That's the one we don't know. But, you know, so again, to put my nickel down is to say that I am in favor of the five to two for the ambulance firefighters. I'm in favor of the higher thresholds for senior citizens and disabled. And I'm high, I'm in favor of a upper quartile number for the veterans.
Yeah, I, I just feel uncomfortable saying that we are going to go to the 50,000 and 58,000 exemption for seniors without understanding the impact of that decision.
What would you propose to do about that?
There must be data. There has to be some way to gather that data.
I'm not in favor of it, but what I think could, could be done is we don't do it this year. We see what happens in another district, in other districts around us. And how much did theirs grow? And we would have a ballpark idea of how much ours would grow. That, I could, that's the only way you can get in for anything related. And because we can't find out our number until we do it. But we can find out similar district numbers. Um, you know, again, I told you where I am. I, I would, I know it, it might, it might increase the number. I'm comfortable with that sliding scale that it's not going to become a huge amount of tax levy shift.
Yeah, I'm open to whatever we decide to do. I think this is where I do feel a little bit more of a moral imperative to act that the income levels are out of date and we want our community to support public education and to support our schools. We want to enable community members to remain within the community. I, I think these are things that we you know, all agree with. And I, I take this as a signal that we have work to do to help our most economically vulnerable elderly, disabled community members. And I'm, I'm concerned that we don't know how that's going to shift the levy for those of us who are not benefiting from these exemptions in particular, but it feels hard to not make this change, having had these income levels put in front of us. It feels hard to just look the other way from my perspective, but I, I do understand the discomfort of trying to implement this without knowing the full impact to all taxpayers. That's that's a problem.
So.
When was this increased exemption offered? Is it, is, are there any districts that would have moved to the increased exemption yet? Or is this the first year that this would be?
This new, the new level?
Then it's, it, I think the law came in, I think in August of last year. So it's, it would have, so it was still going to impact the coming tax year, I think.
Okay.
We wait for it. It's two, yeah.
Can I just, I'm, I don't know if this is helpful at all. Just going to chime in. So if you look at the 2022 census estimate population data for Louis, for, this is for Lewisboro. So I don't have that. I'm not looking Bedford. The estimated population is 12,049. The estimated percentage of persons 65 and older is 17.9%, which is 2,156. I mean, so we, so we're just saying like just by 2,156, 2,000, but that's people. So households, let's assume not 800 households, something like that, you know, I don't know, but it could be.
I mean, the data is in the, in the American Community Service, the community survey, if we really wanted to like dig into it. And so you can get 2021 data that would have some of it. And then we could build out something.
Build up some estimates of some kind, but.
And you can, you can, you could piece together income from that and age stuff. But it, right, does that, is that? If you had the answer to that, I mean, I think that would that change how you thought about this? If we, if we knew the number, if we could kind of estimate the number of seniors?
Let's say, if we knew the number was going to double, which is about what I would estimate. I mean, I'm sort of estimating that. So it would go from 42 right now to 84. So would that influence? I mean, so does that $40 make a difference in, in how we think about the veterans exemption? And do we want to structure it in some way? So that's absorbed inside? Maybe not. Maybe it does. Maybe we think, okay, so it's 40 and it's 40 and it's 80 and we're just going to do both.
Yeah. I mean, so, so maybe it's worth trying to, to build out that number before our public hearing and go in with the, with the proposal that we do that, but then.
Not if we.
What?
Not if we could.
Why not?
When do we have to? So what's the latest date for the public hearing? Does it have to be the next board meeting? It could be the one after it.
I would have to meet the March 1 deadline. It would have to be the next.
Next one.
But, but I mean, to do the census analysis is not.
Then to have a public discussion about it.
If we did, just to ballpark it, just back of the envelope type of thing.
Yeah.
If we did, did the things we already talked about and we went to the maximum for the veterans, do we think it would be a reasonable guesstimate that the tax levy shift, shift on average would be $200?
That's probably high, but yeah.
Yeah, maybe a little bit high.
Yeah.
I mean, just as a ballpark, just as a concept.
Yeah.
I have to say, I don't want to sound cavalier about this, but actually this is why I wanted to see these numbers that I had no idea. I thought this would be thousands of dollars, you know, being shifted around and, you know, asking other people to pay a significantly higher tax bill. Given the good causes that these represent, I, I'm not, nobody wants to pay $200 more than they have to, but it's not, you know, I'm going to move out of town. You know, I'm, I'm going to move out of the district because of it. And I know that's an average, but it's an average based on your assessed value of your house of theoretically higher numbers of for people who have more money. So I wasn't overly, just, I wasn't overly troubled by the, the total.
Okay.
In terms of what, you know.
But do you want to propose which?
So I liked your, your, you know, 54.
Whatever runs in 180, I think, right?
And again, that, that's the one that we could revisit next year, correct? We're increasing it, whatever, you know, from, from a, from a three to, you know, up to here. And then next year, based on the data, we might increase it a little bit further. I think that's a reasonable place to land.
But just to clarify on slide 17 then. So with the other piece of the conversation, I know we don't have a number, but we know that the as is, is that taxpayers are paying approximately $43 for the to carry the exemption for elderly and disabled community members. And we know that currently community members are, I think it's paying about $10, $10.61 approximately, because going to the 241680 would presumably double. So, and in what you've just proposed, Bill, we'd be going from $10.61 for that particular benefit to 3503.
No, sorry. It would be going to.
You're on Bedford.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at Bedford. So.
Okay, but it would still be a.
Ah, so going for, on slide 16, going from 1234 to 3392 for Lewisboro. Gotcha.
More.
I understand. Okay, thank you. I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at the Bedford slide and you were speaking to Lewisboro numbers. Yeah. Yeah.
You said there, you said 33.
So you're saying the 453150 or the 5436180? Which one would, that's what we were deciding? Or, or I think Rory's saying maybe go to the top one. We're deciding between those three? Is that where we are?
You're on slide 16.
Yeah.
And Bill, can you clarify what you were proposing there?
So, and again, I am easily convinced to go higher, but what I was proposing was as a landing spot, at least this year is the S firefighter is yes, senior disabled and the 5436180 for the veterans. With the understanding that, you know, it will be something we'll evaluate next year when we have more data, maybe to increase that.
Which is where six of the other districts are already, right, from, from slide 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that makes sense. That does make sense because we have more options there. It's not black or white, right? There is a slide and we could reevaluate next year depending on how the seniors' numbers fall.
I think, you know, it might be disappointing to the veterans. On the other hand, I think it is, we have to be responsible for the taxpayers too and act with data when we can.
And in the survey, it was about, again, it was, I don't remember. I have to look. It was.
4852.
It was 4852. So so it is about 50 50 and we're, I think we're coming as close to the maximum as, you know, with that one and.
Right.
I can also, I can also clarify a question. One, do we, do we have any tax relief for people that are burdened by the taxes, like not, somebody who's not a senior or?
It's the STAR program.
Right. I mean, they could take a STAR income relief.
They could do an AIC does that.
Do the school district have anything specifically?
Yeah. I mean, like if you, if you don't fall into any of these categories, but the, like a tax increase of $200, $150 would be burdensome. Is there any sort of relief that is available? Okay. I mean, just, I'd sort of be curious.
This whole, this whole area is uncomfortable for us. The reason we, we talk about this only when we have to, is that it puts us in the very uncomfortable position of, of moving money that, you know, when we make a budget, how, how does it get assessed? The taxes are done. And it's not us deciding so much. Here, we're, we're picking people who are gonna pay, honor people, and we're making the decision for them. So it's uncomfortable. I think it would be even, it would get, it would get even more complicated if we then had to make a judgment of, for whom is this increase burdensome? So that we should shift, in the end, it has to be shifted. Somebody else is gonna pay for it. And it's not gonna be New York State. So I, I think it would be hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also, I mean, I, I think that going to the sort of the, the almost highest band is fine. I just wonder for gathering more meaningful information at the hearing, if we should kind of just go all the way and then see kind of what the feedback is? Because we could kind of come to a compromise position later, but just to kind of have the, the sort of extreme discussion.
For the community to respond to.
Let the community respond to that.
Yeah, to have that as the proposal.
That's the 158 number, right? So, or whatever it is, 160. If we went to the community and said, would you be comfortable with 160 bucks a year being transferred to your tax burden to support these initiatives and see, would people say yes or no?
Yeah.
I mean, and if people say yeah, then there's no further conversation. We just push everything to the max.
I think, I think, just to reiterate, we do have one significant unknown in that proposal. So doesn't it, doesn't it-
Senior number.
Right.
And disabled number.
So that leaves us with no opportunity to adjust.
Doubles or triples.
Yeah.
We come up with, I think doubles is a good guess.
Even if you tripled it, I mean, if you, even if you tripled it, it would be 120, 70, and it would, it would still be like $250. I mean, not that that's not, yeah. If you triple, if you tripled that, it would, would be 126. If you go to the maximum veterans exemption, it'd be 7709. So that's like 203 with that. And then if you did, uh, just like the slight increase on the number of firefighters that would qualify, you're at like 2, like 230. But I mean, I'm doing fast.
I think there's something to throwing out the biggest number and seeing where that lands. You know, sort of having numbers to say, does this comfortable or not is, is, I don't know, I think a good way to kind of come to something. And I think we could get a better sense of what our senior population is before the hearing. And that could be present, you know, when we present it, these are our assumptions. And we would like to know what you think. And then we'd have the discussion again.
You're saying we'd get a better sense of our senior population at those income levels?
We might be able to do some work with like the, with the community survey data and census data. We could, I, I'm happy to kind of figure out an estimate of sort of how much would that population increase based on income.
There would be an interesting number to throw in there. What is the, I probably should know this, because I have mother and mother-in-law probably in this group. But if you're maxed out in social security, how much does that add up to a year?
Right.
If, if the number is, you know-
It's over 59. It would be, well, two, if you have two people maxing out, not one.
So to qualify for this, you'd have to have, in terms of what percent of the seniors do we think fall into this income?
Right.
We can take into account the fact that a, you know, median 75 and 100% of, how much income do you get from social security at those different levels? And if that's most of this level anyway, then we're only talking about seniors who have, are on the low end of social security, which is probably not a huge number.
I think the cap right now is 4279, something like that. So I mean, it would be, they would, well, depends on what the change is. Because if it's 44, then they would be over 50. So-
And it slides pretty quickly. I mean, it goes from 50 to five, over $8,000, if you recall.
Right. It's progressive.
But it's, it's, um-
All right.
I, I would propose that we kind of go to the highest for veterans, just for discussion's sake. And kind of to bring that to the hearing. And then we don't have to decide to do that, right? And if we could get some more information on the seniors and kind of build out an assumption around that, that would give us a better picture. And then kind of bring that, you know, at the beginning of the hearing, these are our assumptions. This is what we think the tax burden shift would be. You know, and then ask those kind of questions again, and see, see what people say. And see, see if we get, especially on the veteran one, to see if we get more of a, I mean, I don't know. I, I'd also be interested in surveying again with more precise information too. I know it's another thing to ask you to do. But, but to survey with more precise information of, if this were the number, are you in favor of going to the maximum? Um, and, and see if we get that, if, maybe it'll be a bigger, you know, more people in favor, because now they know actually how much it would be.
Yeah. Can't calculate the maximum, right? That's part of the problem. We just can't calculate it.
Right.
But we can ballpark it.
The maximum benefit right now for social security, if it was just one person in the household getting social security, would be, uh, $54,660. So, so it's possible that a single social security household would be in the sliding scale piece of this. So they wouldn't be-
Yeah. So if they're not the max out, you know, even if they got, you know, 75th percentile, you know, three quarters, it would be well along.
And if there was a second social security income in the house, then, yeah, so-
It just sounds like this, this is targeting-
Very low.
Senior citizens who are really on the lower end of the income scale, just to give it a ballpark for us.
Yes. Yep.
So I, I would say, I'm in agreement that, let's let, you know, we're, we have to do a public hearing, and we'll hear from the community if there's a strong objection to maxing out the veterans' benefit and, and including the other two benefits.
And the community's very comfortable giving them, us our opinion.
Right. The community can comment and provide that feedback at the public hearing.
I just want to circle back to the data that we have from the community, which, as you pointed out, was at 48% to 52%. So 52% said go to the maximum, 48% said either keep it the same or, or go a little bit higher. So I think, I mean, I just want to point, I think we are putting community members in an uncomfortable position. It's gonna be hard for people to come out and say publicly, I don't want you to go to the highest level of the-
Well, maybe we survey then. Maybe we survey instead of doing-
Survey again?
Yeah. Survey again, and survey a little more widely if possible. With this, with more specific question.
This is what the board is proposing.
Yeah.
But isn't that the point of a public hearing? I mean-
Right.
Well, I'm not sure. We had public hearings on other things too, where I think, you know, it's, it's a lot harder sometimes for people to come out and advocate a certain position than another.
Advocate against veterans is a pretty tough.
Yeah, I guess that's tough.
Agreed, but, you know.
But we can do that.
With a survey that's anonymous other than address, who was 50, 50?
We do have a signal here, to the extent, it's not the-
Wait, oh, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one.
This is slide, it's slide 30.
Slide 30, but you're adding-
Of course. No, but to the extent that we have receptivity from our community, it's 48 saying keep it as it is, and slightly increase. Or increase it slightly, and then 52 saying go to the maximum. So I'm just pointing out, we're going-
No, but, but then, but I think the other relevant number there is that 67% are saying go up. And we haven't determined what the number is.
They didn't know the numbers though.
They didn't know the numbers. Yeah. And that's true. The numbers, actually, the numbers are helpful.
It might be a very different answer. Because they might have been imagining my taxes had gone up $2,500.
Yeah. If we do put information, and I'm sure we will, in front of the community between now and the hearing, now we can put numbers to the proposal. The board is proposing. We move forward with this.
Ballpark numbers.
And here is the potential anticipated impact, to the best of our ability to anticipate it. Yeah, that's helpful. Okay, great.
Hold on. Does the, does the, does the board want to see another survey go out?
No.
I do. I, I think we use the public hearing.
I don't, I don't know that it's necessary to survey from my perspective, but I'm, I mean, I'm open to a survey, but I, I don't know that it's necessary. I feel, I feel-
I feel like we have, we've got some reasonable information from the existing survey. We can have a public hearing. I think the survey is still gonna be uncertain.
If there's 12,000 residents, 500 is statistically significant, right?
But, but I mean, the, the only thing, the only reason I would suggest it again is that we're asking a more specific question with this. And so it's not the same. It's, would you, you know, if we, we are proposing to do, right, the, decrease the years, do the, go up to, or increase it for seniors and disabled people, and go to the maximum for veterans, we anticipate the impact would be this. Are you in favor of, you know, and then ask about the three categories again? And we think it would cost this, this, and this, you know, and then ask people what they think, and the compounded one.
My only concern about that is that if we actually give a, like, so when, when we did the impact of the bond-
Yeah.
It was actually a calculatable number. Like, it was actually, if we said it was gonna be $11, $11.15, it was one-
Tax bill.
So I feel like we're making up these numbers. So to present them to the community to say, oh, you're, if it was this, if they live in a house that's assessed at a higher value, it could be a totally different number. And so I'm not comfortable necessarily putting numbers out there and saying, how do you feel about $200? Because we have no idea. So I'm not, like, I think-
With the bond, wasn't it average also, the numbers that were put out?
No, you could go in and put your actual property value in and calculate it. This is, we're like making, I mean-
It's true.
And not making it like out of nothing. We're making-
But an average is also very limited, because-
Right, exactly. We don't know the property values that they have, that it's based on. So I, I don't, I think, I think we just have a public hearing.
Well, but I, I wonder if we need to, and Kim, I'm gonna ask you a little bit here. I wonder if the board needs to, typically when we do a public hearing, it's for example around our, our budget vote, which we've appetized, and we've talked through the budget over and over. And by the time we get to the public hearing, we're able to say to the community, this is what the hearing will be about exactly. And we give all the numbers. And do we need to give some signal to the community that says, you know, the board is inclined in this direction, at the very least, so that people would know-
Yeah.
-what they're coming to hear. Yes. So can we, can we probably put down on a piece of paper?
The only question is, do we go to level five or level six for the veterans?
Or-
In the proposal? I, I don't know.
Or four, five, six.
So we, so we would be notifying the community that the board is inclined to reduce from five to two on the firefighters, go to the higher levels on seniors and those with disabilities, and is looking towards the higher end, if not the very highest end, on the veterans. Final decision to be made on the 23rd, public hearing. Kim, you're comfortable with the public hearing being the place where we make the final decision?
Yeah. Okay.
The decision should be made prior, so that people know what they're coming to.
So we have to, what are we passing? A motion?
On the 23rd, we have to, the board has to adopt a resolution that night.
We have to that night.
But the resolution would be listed in the, in the agenda. So like, the wording of the resolution would be set. It would be a fixed resolution in the agenda that, yeah.
And then it's subject to change that night.
We could modify that night, yeah.
Yeah, we can modify the resolution that night, for sure.
Yeah, I know. We have, we have, we do have to find out whether this complication with the town allows us to pass a resolution on the 23rd, firefighters.
But we can say that.
We'll find that out.
Okay.
We pass a will, a will of the board's or current position of the board to be discussed?
Yeah.
Yeah. No resolution.
We don't need a resolution tonight. We're just, we're just agreeing on the proposal. Which was-
I would say, just in terms of getting, getting the public to respond-
Yeah.
Why don't we say, my, my suggestion would be to say the highest for the veterans.
I agree.
Yeah, just like I said before.
I think that's what we've decided.
See if we get, you know, inundated with-
And if they're not comfortable coming to the microphone, they can email us.
Emails.
Yeah, sure.
So we're all there?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with it.
Okay.
We'll put that information out publicly, so that folks know what. We're not surveying? You're just gonna share the information?
And invite people to come to the hearing, or to communicate with us over email.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll find-
That was easy.
Thank you again for providing the information that enabled us to reach consensus.
And a lot of like legwork to get this information from people who don't necessarily work in the district, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Compiling the results of that survey, I'm sure was difficult.
And just getting the assessors-
They were very helpful.
It's just, it's just a lot of legwork. So it really, it really helped us.
Great. Okay, thank you. This brings us to our public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you so much for those of you in attendance and for your patience. We ask that you please introduce yourself at the podium. We have a sheet, a computer in the back where you can sign up in an Excel workbook, if you haven't had a chance already. And for those of you who haven't participated previously, I'll just mention that this is the portion of the meeting where we will be doing our best to listen and really take on board all of the comments and suggestions that are shared with us. And we will not be engaging in a back and forth or responding tonight, but we can always take back a comment or a suggestion for future board discussion. And with that, it's my pleasure to ask Michael Lombardi to please, um, join us at the microphone.
Could someone tell Mike he's up? Yeah.
Good evening.
I'm from South Salem, New York. I am a firefighter with South Salem, and I'm also, I also serve on the Board of Fire Commission. Um, like you, the Board of Fire Commissioners is considering this. Uh, we were waiting to get a seminar from our fire association in FASNY, which is a fire association in Fire Association of New York. And we had that on last Tuesday. Um, some of the items that, that you're contemplating and thinking about, they did discuss at that meeting. Um, how this started was, the governor and the legislator were looking for ways for recruitment and retention. And what they concluded was this, that it is five-year, two-year would have been more attractive to recruitment and retention. FASNY does represent, recommend that the two-year plan be adopted. We, as a board, are, again, having our public hearing on the 13th, and we are gonna propose the, the two years, which is what we'd like to see the school board do. Uh, in addition to you offering, over the years, the partial exemption to the tax break, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to use your facilities for training. Um, we do reimburse you, but you allow 24 access to fuel, which is a big help. You know, in the middle of the night, you need some fuel, whether it's a fly car with the ambulance, or a fire truck, or so be it. It's a big help having the fuel here. And you have offered us the theater and the auditorium for trainings. So we hope you do consider that. I mean, the big question for you regarding the firehouse, the fire department and its membership of the ammo corps is that two-year deal, which we recommend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine Gallagher, please.
Hi. Good evening, Lorraine Gallagher, Booster Cup resident. Thanks for addressing sports tonight and your announcements. We really appreciate that support. For the record, girls won 47, 47, 34. Annie Brennan had 15 points. Don't know about the boys yet. Um, so, you know, one thing that the board's been focusing on this year a lot, thankfully, is mental health. And as many of you know, that because you do have student athletes, athletes is so important for these students' health, to, mental health, to get out and um, really have an outlet for that. So the district this weekend also allowed us to, to host this lower tournament, which Bill started many years ago in honor of a student who lost his life too early. It is a JV tournament, which is a one-of-a-kind event in the county and maybe even the state, pretty close to it. Um, so I think it was a very successful weekend. Julie and I had a competition going over, did I have more steps? Or did she have more finger types? Because she spent the entire day at the podium. And, you know, Chris McCarthy, our AD, um, he does so much behind the scenes, um, that I think in, in so many ways, he's underappreciated. He had increased his staff leveling for us this year to help us with Bill's not, you know, being the, the force behind this event. It takes so many people. So, um, thank you for that. The facilities, people here are, my husband's been up here before and talked to me about it. They're amazing. The love that they have for our kids, the dedication to their job, the long hours, the thankful tasks of picking up the garbage that people leave behind. And they just, they continue to show up with a smile on their face, and they're so very helpful. So, you know, we, we feed them as much as we can. Um, and we just, we're thankful for their support. Um, next year, you know, we normally run three to four tournaments a year. Uh, this past weekend's usually back-to-back. Saturday is usually the JV, and Sunday is usually modified. Hopefully next year, we'll be able to get both of them back for the, for the wrestling program. But I think this year was a, was a very, very good step. Um, some additional things that boosters are, are bringing to us coming up, uh, next month, the Wizards are returning. And the, the Wizards were the very last event before COVID shut us down. It was that Sunday, I think- It was that Sunday, I think, we were leaving here and we got your email indicating that we would be on vacation for a week and did not return for months. So we are coming back, and it allows us to do some community outreach, bringing a younger population to the school. And I believe it will be happening, but we usually try to do an assembly with the elementary schools where the Wizards actually go to the elementary schools and perform, get the kids excited, and then everybody shows up. It's a big fundraiser for the boosters. So we have some big plans, you know, hopefully putting in a jumbotron in the gym. So, you know, every little bit helps us there. We have homecoming come up, and we are returning with our golf tournament with some amazing new life force behind that. So a lot of exciting things coming for the boosters this year. So thank you for acknowledging our sports teams. We're looking forward to exciting next couple of weeks. And on another note, also, full disclosure, my husband is also a fireman. He is chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners in Pound Ridge, and he's actually been working, apologies, he's traveling tonight, so I didn't get a chance to touch base with him on this. There's a loop, there's an underside in this law where, for the firemen, if you are a member in a town that's not in your district, you don't get the benefit. So he's trying to work with some legislature. So for instance, if you live in Vista and you're a fireman in Pound Ridge, you don't get any of that benefit. So that is something that he is reaching out to try to address because, you know, it's the same long hours. They just work in a different town and are a member in that town. So there's a lot of good work going on through all the districts to help support our veterans. And so thank you for that and for the firemen. Thanks.
Thank you. Phil Swartfeger, please.
Thank you for letting me speak here. Before I speak, I just wanted to give a shout out to Lenore Pearson, persons, who responded to a request of mine to get the John Jay Booster Site listed onto the district website. She had got listed three spots inside 12 hours, and she wrote me a nice note back, you know, acknowledging that, and I really, really do appreciate that. Kind of ties into one of the questions I have tonight. I'm trying to find out if the board and the superintendent are obligated by law, by contract, by school policy to answer questions raised from the members of the community. Whether are they opposed at this board meeting, or they're sent via email? Or is it just a moral and ethical responsibility? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question. I'd like to find out what the answer is, please. You keep saying that you will not, cannot, and won't respond to public comment or questions raised during public comment section. But in fact, I believe you can, if you choose to, per your policies on the district website. Quote from the very first sentence from your public comment policy. "Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to listen and respond to public comment." It goes on to say, "The board president may, as appropriate, answer questions directed by the board." But every time I've been here, it's, we cannot respond. But it doesn't appear to be that way. I know, I just read an article in the paper at the Bedford Central Board Meeting, where a woman spoke about Title IX issue, and the president offered a response on the spot. Now, I don't know if their laws or policies are different than yours. I've been at every board meeting for the last three months, and I have not heard one response to any questions that have been come up during people's public comments. "The school's policies consistently, consistently mention honest and open dialogue, but in reality, it seems like it's a one-way flow." I think I have a solution if it, if it makes sense. If you don't feel comfortable or informed enough to answer questions raised on the spot, wouldn't it be a good idea to have someone write the questions down and maybe answer them at the following board meeting? That way, we feel like we're being listened to and responded to. Our community deserves to be answered. My family is always expected and has always been provided answers and questions from our children's coaches and teachers in this school district. Your staff is required to communicate with every student and parent that raises questions or has concerns. They are not allowed to be ignored. Every good teacher takes this responsibility very seriously. So why are we not getting the responses to the questions and concerns as you expect from your staff and your faculty? You say that you're not allowed to speak about personnel issues, but you have. It seems that everything that is a cause for concern in our school community is shrouded in secrecy. It seems you typically only answer the questions that you want and leave the rest unanswered. The perception of many members of this community is that you absorb, deflect, and delay in hopes that these questions and issues might go away. And you know what? That strategy does work sometimes. But too often, it just worsens and heightens a situation. You say that you are looking to change the rules on public comment. I hope that is not going to limit even further the communication between the constituents and the leadership of this district, but rather that you're going to increase engagement and transparency. That is how you instill the trust from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Patronas, please.
I'm here. I think Phil may have left.
I'm happy to circle back to Phil Patronas if he comes back. And otherwise, Erica Glick, please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, is he back?
No, no.
Oh, sorry. My name is Erica Glick, and I am the parent of two children in Katona Lewisboro, who presently attend the Winward School as KES was not willing to teach them to read. But I'm not here tonight to talk about my own children. I'm here to talk about our children, the children in this community who are not being taught to read like my children, but also who don't have the same advantages or the same kind of resources available to them that other children in our district have. These are the children in our district who are not learning to read, who are suffering, who are being disadvantaged because our district is not meeting their needs appropriately. This is a problem I've tried to address innumerable times and in multiple ways. And tonight, I want to give some very clear steps that are risk-free and cost-free. First, we just have to look around. Bedford Central School District. Last week, there was pretty groundbreaking news regarding evidence-based literacy instruction, exactly what I've been advocating for in Katona Lewisboro for years. I'll read from their resolution for you. Their superintendent will provide their board with a recommendation for a comprehensive reading literacy curriculum aligned with the science of reading by December 23. This shall include a plan to implement such curriculum for the 24, 25 school year and beyond. This resolution also includes appropriate professional development, because as I've been saying to you time and time again, this isn't about the curriculum. This is first and foremost about teacher education and support. I'll also add that Bedford Central has a literacy committee, something that I've advocated for, for over a year. We agree that a school board shouldn't be in charge of making curriculum decisions independent from the professionals. However, the issue at hand isn't about the curriculum. It's about the educational malpractice that happens, with damage to children that have an, with an unfair disadvantage and unfair advantages afforded by people who have money. All of our students in this district matter, not just the ones with financial means. Our students deserve better, and that is a board responsibility. Our board can utilize their oversight role to dig deeper, to establish a literacy committee, to review the evidence, and to teach every child in our district to read. I'd like to hear from our board tonight as to our plans to establish such a committee and to make a similar recommendation as our neighbors in Bedford Central. Some folks may want to deflect these calls for change by suggesting that our district has stronger scores than some other districts and a population with a lower rate of complex needs, less English language learners, families with higher finances. But let's examine for a moment our recent New York State ELA assessment data. It seems as though we're satisfied that only 25% of our students can't read at a proficient level. I suppose it's better than the rest of the state, which falls around 50%, but certainly nothing to celebrate. Every child should be able to read, period. It seems as though we're satisfied that approximately 2/3 of our students with IEPs cannot read proficiently. 2/3. Have we completely thrown in the towel on our students with IEPs? It seems we're satisfied that only half of our economically disadvantaged students can read. Again, shameful, which leads me to my next point. I sent each trustee a link to the Emily Hanford Sold a Story podcast. Ms. Hanford is a nationally recognized education reporter for American Public Media. She's put out several outstanding pieces over the years, shining a light on the dysfunction that is reading instruction in our country, the shameful, ineffective reading instruction to which we are not immune. This podcast was exceptional and very easy to understand, albeit embarrassing, realizing that learning to read has become a rich man's game. Children in our district who struggle simply get tutored. Our tutors have packed schedules before and after school. Katona Lewisboro is depending on the fact that parents address these issues on their own, out of their own pockets. We are depending on our parents to do that here. Guess who isn't getting tutored? Our economically disadvantaged students, and only half of those students can read proficiently. I think we can connect the dots. How can we ever talk about equity and inclusion if we don't teach every single child to read, a skill which is essential to success in our society? Finally, I'm here because I want to be sure to wish Ms. Ford well. This is a bookend experience for me, as my very first Board of Ed meeting was in March 2018, when Katona Lewisboro announced Ms. Ford's appointment. Along those lines, I hope our district will cast a wide net, a wide net for candidates, and I hope they will be cognizant of the candidate's grasp of reading research. Also, a wide net for our hiring committee. I hope we'll extend outside of our PTOs and our parent council, as unfortunately, these organizations do not include all interested parties, nor do they have the background knowledge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adam Kern, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Erica. That was a very important concern. So I just wanted to reiterate what Lorraine said earlier by thanking you for addressing some athletic information earlier tonight. I think that's super important. Overall, though, I just wanted to know why the athletics programs have seemed to fallen off the radar here at John Jay. It's shocking to me to have, that we have so many kids participating in school sports, yet so little attention seems to be given to its importance. And don't misunderstand me, academics, the arts, other extracurricular activities are essential to a healthy school environment. I just don't see much attention being paid to our athletic program other than the unfortunate dismissing of one of our most positive influencers and coaches to ever grace these halls. A few board meetings back, there was a thorough presentation on mental health in our schools. Curiously, not one mention of the impact our coaches have on our kids. After all, they are the ones who typically spend the most time with the kids, tend to know them more on an in-depth level than a teacher-student relationship. They discussed teacher training, but I guess they didn't think coaches needed this training in regard to mental health. I would hope they would address that. Quick look at the science behind high school athletics and mental health. Exercise positively impacts levels of serotonin, a chemical that helps regulate mental health and stimulates, a neurotransmitter in the brain which improves mood. Physical activity releases endorphins, which is the body's happy chemical, and reduces the rate of stress hormone cortisol. Sports and participation in sports are associated with lower rates of anxiety, depression, and even suicide. The more time spent being physically active, the less time teens tend to spend on social media, which has proven to lower adolescent well-being. Sports enhance resilience, empathy, confidence, and empowerment. In fact, research is now showing that sports and other types of physical activity can be equally as effective as medication of teens with improving mental health and overall happiness levels. So despite what the scoreboard says at the end of a game or a contest, we should be celebrating our athletic program here, putting resources and some enthusiasm behind it. My old high school had a varsity club and a captain homeroom. We learned valuable leadership skills each day that I still vividly remember and find useful. Do we celebrate or encourage our athletes enough here? If we want to retain more athletes here instead of seeing them go to nearby private schools, let's get back to motivating students in a positive way, and we will lower mental health risks at the same time. Let's focus on being a school that prioritizes academics, the arts, and yes, athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else waiting to speak who hadn't had an opportunity? Please. If you could just please introduce yourself.
So I'm Danielle Datchek. I'm a parent of a high school student and a graduate. You know, after you sit through these meetings, other things come to mind. So I want to start with, a few meetings ago, we heard about approximately 80% of students who are doing well. And we heard about the positive parts about those kids who are achieving, and I applaud the district, I truly do. I left here thinking, what about the 20%? Two meetings ago, we heard about mental health in our schools. And I appreciate very much the work you're doing. I wondered, nobody mentioned those kids who are struggling learners and how that affects their mental health. And it just seems like there's such an important thread of reading and academic success that for those students who are not achieving that, there's so many more opportunities we can be having for them in the district. I've had a lot of private conversations, and I won't have conversations about my students here. We'll continue to do that. But publicly, I would like to say to this board, I've been a teacher for close to about 26 years now. At the secondary level, we do not have a process for response to intervention that is appropriately targeting students that have needs and servicing them at a building level. And we've had many conversations, and these conversations cannot only happen behind closed doors anymore. We have students who are struggling, who aren't being identified, aren't being serviced, and that affects everybody. I heard four times tonight how important reading is, and I haven't had that experience as a parent in this district in secondary education. So I'm here to say, we cannot say that because people don't come to this mic, it's not happening. We have to listen. I've heard people coming and saying, reading isn't working in this district. More presentations aren't going to fix that. New reading curriculum following the science of reading will fix that. Here's support for students that's data-driven, where children who are not reading or doing math or learning at functional levels are getting appropriate supports that they're legally entitled to, that this district is not providing. It's happening. And I wanted to be a voice to say, I will continue to have those conversations privately. However, they need to be had publicly as well. We need to do better. And if you care about mental health and you care about students, you need to care about services that are appropriate, data-driven decisions, and teaching kids how to read. The foundations will bring us to everything else. Project-based learning cannot happen if a child cannot read. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else waiting to speak? Okay, if not, thank you very much to all of you for your thoughts and comments, suggestions and questions. And I will close the public comment period. And this brings us to 12.01, which is our opportunity to make use of the consent agenda to conduct a lot of business here tonight. to conduct a lot of business here tonight. I don't believe anything needs to be pulled out or voted on separately, to my knowledge. So I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda. If somebody would please second it. Thank you, Bill. And then I will pause for comments.
You're giving me the opportunity to congratulate with very mixed feelings my friend and colleague, Mary Ford.
Yes, thank you.
Resignation for the purpose of retirement is on the agenda tonight. Mary, I want to say thank you for all the incredible work you've done these past five years for our district. You've been a tremendous colleague, a tremendous leader, a friend and an asset to the district. And your legacy will maintain for a very long time. We thank you for all that very fine work that you've done.
Bittersweet.
Yes.
Enjoyed every minute and it's been an honor to serve here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, for those kind words. And allow us to please underscore our debt of gratitude to you, Mary. And we know that we will have a more appropriate festive opportunity to celebrate your work at the end of the school year in due course and in fine form. But we would be remiss if we didn't also take this opportunity to say thank you and we wish you all the very best. We know that you have very happy plans in your retirement and we're very happy for you about those plans. And we will miss you. Thank you. Were there any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, then we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you. And this brings us to 17.01, which is an opportunity for board discussion at 10:47 PM. I will pause for any new business. There isn't any, then we can move ahead and look at future meetings. I've heard it mentioned already that Sustainability is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:15 in the district office conference room. And Audit Committee is scheduled to meet at 7:00 PM in the district office conference room on Wednesday, February 8. The board will next meet on Thursday, February 23, 7:30 PM here in the library. And that is anticipated also to be our hearing related to an opportunity to move forward with adjustments to these exemptions. Friday, February 24, 9:00 AM, Policy Committee will meet in the district office. And Saturday, wow, February 25, that's coming up soon. We will have our annual opportunity to deliberate superintendent's proposed budget, line item by line item. That's Saturday, February 25 at 8:30.
Is it usually in February?
It is. Yeah, it's always a Saturday in February. Yes.
It's the same weekend, too.
Same weekend.
It's always the same weekend.
So is it at the very next meeting that we will start the high-level overview of the proposed budget?
On it.
Great. On the 23rd. Okay. If I haven't missed anything, then we can look ahead to a motion to adjourn. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn into executive for the purpose of employment history of an individual. If I could have a second, please. Ilana, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for the presentation.